Members of council, the first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the council minutes of September 10, 2007. If I have a motion please, so moved by councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Maves. Any discussion with respect to the minutes as presented? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. This time I'm going to ask members of council if there's any disclosure of any pecuniary interest by any of the members of council. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, I have a conflict on bylaw 2095527, a numbered company on Fallsview, Bernadette.
He's so noted. Any others this evening? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We have a series of deputations, members of council, and the first one is understand the question on the provincial referendum. We have with us this evening Judy Inzley, who is a referendum resource officer for the electoral district of Niagara, to make a presentation to council on the October 10 provincial election referendum. Welcome, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening, your worship and members of the council. I'm this riding's resource officer for the referendum, and I've been appointed by Elections Ontario to be out here talking to everybody this evening. The chief electoral officer of the whole province has regulatory responsibilities to make the administration of this referendum, and he has to ensure that the process is fair and transparent and accessible to all Ontarioans who would like to get involved and vote in this referendum. My name is Judy Inzley, and there are over 100 resource referendum officers out in the province since August the 13th, and we have been making presentations to the general public about the referendum and trying to answer any questions you might have about it. I'm here to describe for you as best I can the background on how the referendum came about and what's being asked of you, the Ontario voter. In preparation for the Ontario's October the 10th election, there's also going to be a referendum on electoral reform as well, so you're going to be asked to cast two ballots this October the 10th, one for the referendum and one for your MPP as per usual. And our mandate is to help you understand the question, and it's designed to ensure that Ontario's 8.5 million voters have a clear understanding of what the referendum is about, so that you can come to a decision on how you'd like to mark your ballots on October the 10th this fall. This process was started back in June 2005. The Ontario legislature began a review of our electoral system as it stands today, and in March of 2006, the legislature struck a mandate, and they put together a group of people called the Citizens Assembly, and the Citizens Assembly were picked from the 104 writings across Ontario, and it was a mixture of 52 men and 52 women, ages ranging from 19 to 76, and it was out at random off the voters list, which made it very fair. It made up a really good cross-section of your average Ontario voters, and they came together in Toronto, and they looked at electoral reform and electoral voting in 110 countries around the world. And when they finished, about a year later, they came back to the province and said, "We have decided that the voters in Ontario should look at something called the mixed-member proportional. It sounds more involved than it really is." And the system we have in place right now is called first past the post, and all the parties throw candidates into a writing, and whoever wins the writing by that many votes wins that writing, and whichever party wins the most number of writings across the province, they accept as leaders of our Ontario government. Now, with mixed-member proportional, what they're asking you to do is add another layer. So you're going to be electing your MPPs as we always do in first past the post, but they're going to ask you to vote on a party. So you'll have two votes, under the mixed-member proportional, you'll have two votes. You get to elect your MPP as we always have, and you'll be asked to vote for which party you want to head up the government. And what happens after that, they sit down and they count all the votes, the parties are given a percentage, they earn a percentage of those votes. So if in 2003, the Green Party won 2.8% of the votes across the province on a popularity level. If in 2011, they win 3% of the popular vote, they will be given a seat in the provincial legislature. Whether they win a writing or not has no bearing on it. So the seats are actually allocated to the parties to ensure that they receive the proper number of seats that they would have gotten had they won, compared to the percentages of votes they got across the province. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Sure? Okay.
Can you just address the microphone, please, if you could? I'd appreciate it.
Oh, you'd rather? Okay, sorry about that.
Yes, they can watch the monitor as well.
Okay, all right. This referendum is going to be held at the same time as the provincial election on October the 10th, and the Ontario voters will receive a referendum ballot to choose whether to continue the current electoral system known as first past the post, or adopt the mixed-member proportional electoral system proposed by the Citizens Assembly. This marks the first time since 1792 that the electors are being asked to change the way the Ontario's provincial representatives are elected, and this is the first referendum that the voters of Ontario have been asked to participate in since 1924. The easiest example of first past the post is our current system of electing our representatives. The candidate who receives the most votes wins. There is only one winner, and the provincial party that wins the most writings is asked to form the government. The mixed-member proportional system is a combination of two voting systems, our current first past the post and proportional representation system. If 60% of all the referendum ballots across the province and 50% of the voters in 64 of the 104 electoral districts vote for the mixed-member proportional system, then the mixed-member proportional system would be put forward in Ontario, and it would become into law by December 31, 2008. The new government would have to officially make the mixed-member proportional system Ontario's new electoral system. I believe we all understand first past the post, however, further explanation is required for the mixed-member proportional. Under the mixed-member proportional system, voters will be asked to cast two votes, one for a local member and the second would be for a political party. Ontario would be divided into 90 geographical areas, much like our current electoral systems now. However, the provincial legislature would have 129 seats, or 129 sitting members in the legislature. There would be 90 local members directly voted into office through first past the post, and there would be 39 list members. The list members elected to the legislatures would be determined by the level of support each provincial party received. Before the election, parties would nominate candidates to become list members, and the parties would have to describe how these 39 list members were chosen. A list member can only be elected from a local party that receives more than 3% of the popular vote cast in the province, and if a political party is entitled to more seats than it won locally, list members are elected to make the difference. In the end, the political party that receives the overall share of seats will roughly equal the total votes passed for the parties of the province. The party with the largest number of members in the legislature, including local members and list members, will be asked to form the government. The mandate of Elections Ontario is to ensure that Ontario voters are not only aware that a referendum is occurring on October the 10th, but they are adequately prepared to make an informed decision based on your individual preferences and considerations and priorities. You're encouraged to seek further information from Elections Ontario at the website www.yourbigdecision.ca, which provides voters with impartial tools to define and understand the first past the post and the mixed-member proportional electoral system, and to assess how these systems express your priorities and considerations. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions for members of council? Having seen none, thank you very much, we appreciate that, and hope that those watching will be able to share the information as well, thank you. Councillor Carey?
Your worship, councillor Thompson informed me that we're going to deal with bylaw 2007-193, it was in our handouts.
Yes.
It was an item that we discussed last council meeting, of which I declared a conflict. It was slipped in as a handout.
Okay.
I think that in the future, if we have a handout on a bylaw like this which doesn't go into detail, I think that the court should notify, we should notify, I didn't look at that, and I would have maybe missed it under my conflict.
So are you declaring a conflict again?
Yes, the same one that you dealt with last week.
Thank you.
It's unusual for the staff to bring something back this quick.
Thank you, so noted. Thank you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Niagara Coalition against TMA. We have representatives from the Niagara Health Coalition, and also from NCAST, and Chair of the Council Canadians of Niagara, who are going to make a presentation regarding TMA. Please come forward and address the council if you would. If you can kind enough just to pronounce your name and your address for the record, please.
Certainly. Good evening, and thank you for inviting us here. My name is Saleh Waziruddin, which is spelled out in your agenda, and I live at 4457 Ferguson Street in this city, and I would like you, as our representatives, to keep control of the direction that this city's going in. I believe that an agreement that the Premier of the province might sign would threaten that, and that my friend here Fiona will be speaking more about that. I hope you've had a chance to read the literature in the resolution. If you haven't, I hope you will read it tonight, and I hope also tonight you will make and pass a resolution asking the province to not sign this agreement. It's mostly a mobility agreement. I believe it's only going to make us mobile in one direction, which is downwards, it's a race to the bottom, where we have less influence over our own city. So without further ado, I'd like to pass on to Fiona.
Okay, thank you. And Fiona, for the record, again, would you just give us your name and address?
Thank you. My name is Fiona McMurray, and I'm a resident of Welland, 41 Griffith Street.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, Mayor Salchi, and you councillors, for accepting our request to present to you this evening some considerations on the TMA, or the trade investment and labour mobility agreement. Although I've been a resident in Niagara since 1984, this is the very first time that I've made a presentation to a municipal council. I'm more than a little nervous, but I'm very honoured to do so. The Niagara Coalition Against the SPP and TMA, or NCAST as we're calling ourselves, is a coalition of citizens and residents of the Niagara region who wish to point out to our municipal councils that a rather extraordinary agreement directly affecting local government is about to be signed into law by the next premier of Ontario, whichever one that may be. Not only will this agreement not go through the legislature, but it will be signed without benefit of consultation with any other levels of government in this province. The TMA is currently in force between the provinces of British Columbia and Alberta. It was signed in April 2006 by Gordon Campbell, Premier of British Columbia, along with that province's Minister of Economic Development, Colin Hanson, and Ralph Klein, then Premier of Alberta, along with Gary Marr, Alberta's Minister of Intergovernmental Affairs. It then actually came into force in April of 2007, catching everybody pretty well unaware. Since then, municipalities in the two provinces, and I refer you to attachment 3.5 in our document, have been scrambling to come to terms with the implications of the TMA, and in most cases, trying to get rid of it. The province of Saskatchewan, in fact, bowed to public pressure to have a debate in the legislature on the TMA, and in August of this year, soundly defeated a motion to sign on to it. The TMA was Ralph Klein's parting gift to Albertans before leaving office. He and BC's Gordon Campbell apparently felt that they should form a Western trading bloc to fight the might of nasty Ontario. Trouble was that Gordon Campbell was also courting Dawson-McGee at the time, as he was negotiating with Ralph Klein. And Quebec's Jean Charret has publicly stated that he's just waiting for Ontario to lead the way. So the whole notion of a Western trading bloc kind of goes out the window, doesn't it? So what in fact is the TMA trying to do? Well, back in 1994, as I'm sure you all know, the federal government and all the provinces signed on to an agreement on internal trade, the AIT. The AIT is a radical document in the spirit of NAFTA, and the TMA has marveled on the AIT to a considerable extent. Both the AIC and the TMA state that, quote, "There shall be no obstacles to trade, investment, and labour mobility." They both declare that regulations in both provinces should be the same, which of course means that lower standards should prevail. It's the differences though between the TMA and the AIT that are really significant. The agreement on internal trade depends on voluntary compliance, allowing governments to harmonise their regulations gradually. Not only is the onus on private investors to lobby governments to pursue complaints on their behalf, but governments and their agencies can block any complaint that they consider unreasonable. Even if the dispute panel rules in favour of the investor, no monetary compensation is awarded to the complainant. Under the agreement on internal trade, in other words, authority still rests with the elected governments and their agencies. The TMA, however, changes all of that. All authority is stripped from every level of governance, from the province itself to regional councils, municipal councils, school, hospital boards, and university and college boards, and this authority is then being handed over to the private sector. That's why you're not being consulted. That is why labour, education, public health, and the Ontario public are not being consulted. Because the TMA is not about the public, or its representatives, or those organisational bodies established to protect citizen and environmental rights. The TMA is about corporations and investors, period. One objective of the TMA is to eliminate the barriers that restrict or impair trade, investment, or labour mobility. Attachment 3.7 of your document is a comprehensive report from a Canadian Centre for Policy Alternatives that effectively shows that a 2005 Conference Board of Canada report on trade, which supported efforts like the TMA, was in fact deeply flawed, and that in fact these so-called interprovincial trade barriers are so minimal as to be a non-issue. Progress on them also is occurring more gradually under the AIT. What about barriers to labour mobility? Well, labour and their unions hate the TMA, just check on any of their websites. They feel, quite appropriately, that it has all of the worst features of NAFTA's Chapter 11, and then some. Some of them are referred to as NAFTA on crack. With NAFTA, Canadian workers watch as general orders move down south, seeking lower environmental standards, lower worker safety regulations, and the right to pay lower wages. Union members fear that TMA may see a sort of reverse bidding work, as Canadian regions and municipalities are forced to compete to encourage investment by dispensing the regulations and bylaws that they set, that protect the public good by surveying local needs. Barriers to workers in the professions, but the professional associations themselves make those rules. They are working under the AIT to make it easier for their members to relocate to other provinces. TMA has no jurisdiction over these professional associations, so how could it improve professional worker mobility? Answer: it can't. Check the agreement itself. And that leaves us with this barriers to investment. In other words, regulations, bylaws, laws, the things that you do. All laws and regulations, of course, restrict in some way. That's how the public is served and protected. That's how we keep the uniqueness of our communities. So your green space legislation, your anti-pollution legislation, your protection of heritage buildings, and the uniqueness of your downtown core, all these potentially impair investment by developers, and are thus wide open to challenge, and financial challenge, under the TMA. Do you councillors want business to invest in Niagara Falls? Of course you do. Do you want to have no control whatsoever, over whom, what, where, and when such development occurs? I doubt it. Well, under TMA, you see, you can really say goodbye to that control, because TMA would impact a wide range of decisions and limit any new government initiatives that would in any way be seen as restricting, guiding, or shaping economic development.
Mrs McMurray, you have one minute.
Thank you. It prevents governments from providing targeted grants and loans to foster economic development, and severely restricts efforts to support local businesses through government pushing decisions. Target promotion of small business, neighbourhood development, none of that's allowed. All regulations are open to challenge, and any investor or corporation that wants to set up business and is prevented from conducting its business as it wants, can sue local government for up to $5 million, claiming, restricts, these restrictions impair their ability to make up larger profit, and that same regulation can be charged over and over again.
Mrs McMurray, I have to ask you to wrap up, if you would, please.
Thank you. And local governments don't even get to defend themselves when suits are brought against them. The complaints are handled by a private board of trade lawyers. This is handled at a provincial level, and it is the province who pays. Are they going to pay it over and over again? I don't think so. What's the province trying to say? Swallow it, and they'll keep the cash. So TMA's a recipe for disaster.
Thank you very much.
And I ask you all, please, keep your control. We citizens need you to keep this control. It's where democracy happens, at the local level.
Thank you very much, Mrs McMurray. I'm going to ask the members of council if they have any questions. So councillor Wayne?
Actually, comments. Good to see you again Fiona. We're colleagues from work. I read through almost all, you can call me, but I read through almost all of the very comprehensive package that the coalition provided, and it was a very interesting reading. I was especially interested in what came out of Saskatchewan when their rationale for suddenly rejecting getting involved, I saw that there's a number of municipalities in BC which have concerns. The mechanisms are already in place under the AIT. If there are unreasonable barriers to labour mobility, or investment, or trade, there's something in place in which they can be looked at on an individual basis, and if they're unreasonable, then they can be dealt with. This general sweeping approach is very dangerous, and I understand the coalition has had the resolution passed already by St Catherine's and Pelham, and I'm really concerned about the possibility of loss of local choice, that was talked about extensively in the Saskatchewan documents, and after reading all this, what it comes down to for me is better safe than sorry. We don't know enough about this. There hasn't been public consultation in BC, in Alberta, here yet. We don't know what we're getting into, and the implications could be very, very grave and very wide sweeping, and I really think better safe than sorry, so I will move the anti-TMA resolution provided by the coalition.
Moved by councillor Wayne, is there a second to the motion? Councillor Ananle? Any comments or questions further? Yes, councillor Carey?
Much prolonged debate, your worship, but I don't know about it either way. I don't know what the intent, what's the intent of our government to do this? What's the intent? Why do they want to do it? It sounds to me like they just want a level playing field across the whole country, so that a company can invest in any of the provinces, and no one can say, "No, you can't." So unless I heard as much of a pitch for it as I'm hearing against it, I don't know if it's fair for us to decide this or not. I just don't know enough about it.
Okay. Is that a question, councillor Carey? Are you making it to members of council? Do you want to address it? Yes, councillor Wayne?
That's part of the resolution, is asking for an open public debate on the matter. Let's not just go rushing into this thing that we really don't know a lot about, and which we could be very, very sorry we get into, as certain BC municipalities are. It's calling for an open debate in the legislature, thinking before we leave.
Okay. Any other questions for members of council? There were motion on the floor then to deal with that. All those in favour of the motion? One, two, three, four, please raise your hands if you're in favour. Five, six, seven opposed? One, thank you, the motion's carried. Thank you very much for your presentation this evening. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from Mr Gary Beck with regard to the business plan for the Niagara Falls Armory. Mr Beck, would you come forward, please? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Gary Beck, and I live at 9200 South Road, and of course I'm here to represent the Niagara Military Museum. But before we get started with this, your worship, is it possible to mention what we had talked about?
Yes, you can do so, but you're going to mention it in remarks, so sure, go ahead.
Saturday morning, we lost a very, very prominent member of our rank, who is also a veteran and a member in this community. He was a lawyer in this community for many, many years, and that's John McDonald. So unfortunately, we had lost him. You don't have to battle him anymore, but maybe from up there, he might fight back, who knows?
We're saddened to hear the news, and we're going to make some comments during our report later, so thank you very much.
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, members of council, city staff, veterans, ladies and gentlemen. The journey towards the establishment of a military museum that would display and preserve the stories of our veterans and the military history of the Niagara Peninsula started in 1999, some eight years ago. At the June 14, 2007 Niagara Falls City Council meeting, a motion was passed by council that the Niagara Military Museum meet with Mr John McDonald to discuss a method to expedite a lease agreement between the Niagara Military Museum and the city of Niagara Falls. The Niagara Military Museum did, as directed, meet with Mr McDonald and Mr Ken Erdin with the following proposal, to expedite the establishment of a military museum in the Niagara Falls Armory. First, to allow the Niagara Military Museum to look after the entire Niagara Falls Armory. Secondly, to allow the Niagara Military Museum to fulfill this role without any management cost to the city. Thirdly, the city to sign a long-term lease with the Niagara Military Museum for the entire building. And fourthly, to prevent the involvement and interference of any other city-appointed board in the day-to-day operations of the museum. With regard to point number four, the Niagara Military Museum would prefer that Mr Tom Masarv be the city contact to provide us with the guidance and approval to perform any necessary interior repairs to the structural surfaces and act as a contact for future operations of the building. The Niagara Military Museum will do the necessary surface preparation for any further painting at no cost to the city of Niagara Falls. We plan on getting the paint and labour donated from local businesses, and we've looked into that already, tradesmen and our own volunteers. At present, we are raising money to buy equipment and to build cabinets to display our artefacts. We would only ask the city to continue maintaining the existing utilities while the Niagara Military Museum is preparing a facility for opening day. With regard to the lease process, the Niagara Military Museum is prepared to put together and submit a standard commercial lease at no cost to the city, through both parties' approval. In the business plan that was handed over to the mayor and councillors on pages 40 and 41, you will notice that the Niagara Military Museum will help with some of the funding to repair exterior brickwork and install an elevator. For example, in lieu of the city using city taxpayers' money for the elevator, the Niagara Military Museum will obtain funding from other sources that are not Also in the business plan on page thirty-two, with a proper and effective marketing programme, projections are given for the possible income for the next three years. And they really look good. The income and attendance projections have, since 2003, always been based on having the entire armory available as a museum space. At the meeting of July 5th, 2007, with Mr. McDonald and Mr. Burden, I indicated that because of the volume of possible exhibits in the military museum's auction, the Niagara Military Museum would like council to consider us the sole tenant of the armory building. Having spent the last eight-plus years, a considerable amount of time and money attending many meetings, we feel that time, the time has come for the city to go ahead with the approval of our proposal to see me. In closing, I would urge you, search your consciousness and ask yourself if you truly believe this project is worthy of your support. Thank you. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beck. Members of council, do you have any questions? Councillor Carrion?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just one question for Mr. Beck. Who exactly is the Niagara Military Museum and how many members do you have?
At the present time, we've got thirty-eight members.
Councillor Thompson?
Yes, first of all, thanks to Mr. Beck and his people who've been fighting this battle almost like the First World War. It's, if you look at that building, the people who enlisted during the First World War, the Second World War, and the regiment was there for the history of that building. And it sits idle and there was a lot of effort put in to try to get that from the federal government and into the city ownership. I think it's, it's appropriate that it be continued as a military facility. And we have volunteers and people in the community who are willing to accept that responsibility and have been for some time. And I know there's a board of museums and there's all kinds of groups who want to have their hands on and make sure that this is done in an orderly and appropriate fashion. However, I, I see that this is going to be sitting there for the next ten years, working through the red tape and the, and the problems while Mr. Beck and his people could be in there fixing up, painting, cleaning. And if they fail, they fail. But if they're successful, at least we've got a military museum moving forward and something that is extremely appropriate in that building and for this community with the number of visitors that we have here. So, I don't, I'm not going to pretend that I know all of the logistics to make this happen. I just want to reiterate again that I think the group is, is appropriate. I think they have the manpower and the enthusiasm and I think a military museum is the appropriate way to do it. And again, I don't know how you do this, but I'd like to have it referred to Mr. McDonald and, and the group to try to work out this and refer it back quickly to council if it can be done, if it can't, why it can't be done. And if we can't let these people in there get working and do something meaningful for that building. I see no negligence with respect to that whatsoever, so hopefully the council will go along with that.
Yes, councillor Wain.
Speaking as the former chair of the Ad-Hoc Armory Committee in which Vincent Jim sat along with myself, our committee, when we came back with our recommendations last term, was absolutely adamant that the prime use of this building should be to commemorate our military heritage. And that has always been the intent ever since. We had a whole set of recommendations and the main floor was to be devoted to military heritage and the second floor was to be able to complementary community uses. And I remember another thing in our recommendation was that the finances be there so that the users of the building were paying more or less market rates, at least covering the cost to the city of operating the building. I see there's a recommendation from staff to revive the committee to review the submission and if the other two members are willing, I'd be willing to come back as well. But my main thing is, I see that in the report, there's a memo that staff has only had a cursory look at the plan and I'm really looking to staff to comment on the feasibility of the current proposal and the business plan. So, I don't want to commit to anything until I get some sort of recommendation from staff on what their feelings are on this. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure it was very clear that commemorating our military heritage has always been the intent for that building since our committee wrapped up. I can wish to confirm what the other two members are, but I really need the staff input as well.
Councillor Wain, you referred to the memo, we do have a recommendation contained in the memo that we revive the Armory Ad-Hoc Committee to review the submission by the Niagara Military Museum and we can certainly incorporate the benefit of staff input if you like. Would you like to make that a motion?
Sure.
So, moved by councillor Wain, seconded by councillor Inley. Any discussion on the motion? Councillor Carrion, yes, councillor Carrion, please.
I'm pleased to sit back on the committee, some of us need reviving.
Okay. And is that it, councillor Diabally?
Yes, Your Worship, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. And the third cast of comment.
Actually, at the beginning of your term, you fulfilled a, you filled out a questionnaire as far as what committees you wanted to sit on and actually it was only councillor Carrion and councillor Maves that put their names down for the Armory Ad-Hoc Committee. I mean, if the, if you two want to join them, I guess that's up to you this evening.
Is it, is it?
If councillor Maves was very interested in that, I would understand and step back.
Okay, that's fine. All righty, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favour? It's Carrion that answered, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Beck. Appreciate it.
If they're willing to have these meetings, are we and would we be allowed to attend?
I could defer to the chair on that, councillor Wain, are you going to?
I can still the chair now.
You have been.
We had a variety of meetings last time. There were working meetings of just the members of council and the staff involved and then there were public meetings at which a number of different groups were in attendance. So, I'm not sure. I think we have to start with the working meeting and from there, it's best to proceed.
Okay.
Last time around, we were never invited to any meeting.
Hopefully, you will be now and you've made the submission and I'll certainly want to ask you questions with regard to submissions, I'm sure, Mr. Beck. So, let's let the committee begin the process and we thank you for your interest, so thank you very much. Thank you. Members of council, the next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Downtown DIA with regard to a proposed new direction for revitalisation of our downtown. We have a number of the members of the DIA here this evening, I'm noting, and making the presentation for the DIA is Mrs. Luriki Gross and Mr. Paul Sotiel. So, Luriki, would you like to come forward with Paul? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship, honourable Mr. Selsey, esteemed members of council, valued city staff and honoured guests. I stand before you tonight in several capacities. Vice President of Olson-Sotiel Insurance Brokers, as a board member for the Niagara Falls Downtown Board of Management, and as a concerned citizen of Niagara Falls. Downtown Queen Street area has been the topic of endless discussion, speculation, studies and concern. Olson-Sotiel Insurance Brokers have been located on Queen Street since our inception in nineteen eighty, first as a tenant and since nineteen eighty-four as a building owner and a place of business. We are committed to Queen Street and are not interested in selling our property or relocating. We believe our address directly across the street from Niagara Falls City Hall is a very desirable location for any business and we're very proud of it. To that end, we are committed to major facade renovations to our building, which will hopefully capture the spirit and essence of the revitalised Queen Street. Olson-Sotiel wants to be part of the new Queen Street area. After many years of absence, I accepted a nomination to run for the Downtown DIA once again. I did this because I felt it necessary to assist in a new vision for the Queen Street area, a new plan which does not call for huge amounts of Niagara Falls tax dollars or the expropriation of our buildings. A new plan which will rely on cooperation and support and a shared vision which must take small steps towards its goal. The Niagara Falls Downtown DIA has entered into an agreement for development management with Siminelli Real Estate Corporation of Canada in order to make our shared vision a reality. I am very pleased to introduce Ms. Luriki Gross, Managing Director with Siminelli, who will share with us all our plan for a new affordable tomorrow on Queen Street.
Thank you.
Good evening, Your Worship, Mr. Selsey, members of council, city staff. I need to figure out the technical aspect here of how to get this thing to move forward and that.
I'll do that for us.
It's okay, we'll take care of that.
You're going to do that for me? Okay, great. That first slide, I don't know if you recognise it, but that actually is a view of the downtown circa nineteen seventy in the days when downtown was a very vital place and we would really like to return it to that. That was Christmas shopping in downtown Niagara Falls in nineteen seventy, approximately. I wanted to start off this evening by talking about who Siminelli is. Some of you may already know, but I'll refresh your memory if you may have forgotten. But in any case, we've been in existence for more than fifty years, based in Buffalo area. And as most of you probably know, Buffalo is one of the oldest cities in the United States and Siminelli has been an integral part of many facets of the revitalisation of Buffalo, which makes us uniquely qualified, I think, to participate in what is taking place here in downtown Niagara Falls. Siminelli Development Company, our parent company for, the parent company for Siminelli Real Estate Corporation of Canada evolved from Frank Siminelli Construction in nineteen eighty-nine. Today, we've got over nine million square feet under management and a client base of over three hundred and fifty companies. We've been in the Niagara region now for three and a half years with our offices located in downtown Niagara Falls. And our recent investment in Niagara Falls includes Minex Worldwide Building. We have bought over four hundred jobs here into Niagara Falls through our investment in a building that was vacant and derelict at the time that we purchased it. If any of you take a drive down Montrose, you'll see all the work that we're doing. We're investing millions of dollars in the site work and upgrading the building, even though it was, the bones of the building were good, it sure needed an awful lot of work. We also own, or we have an investment in the Lundys Treasure Chest Storage Property that runs on to KiwiW. Today, I want to talk about a number of things. First of all, why is a downtown of a city important? Why we should learn from the experience of others? And I'm going to talk about why partnerships are a key to the success of any kind of a revitalisation. And what I believe is that a revitalisation must take into account the economic reality of a city like Niagara Falls. And finally, I'm going to talk about how we think we can make it happen now, today. Why is a downtown important? As you know, downtown Niagara Falls is home to both the city's train station and the bus station. It's the first impression that many people have of Niagara Falls. It's a gateway into our community and pride in our community says that should be a positive impression. And as we know, today, it is not. The province of Ontario has made some very important strides towards smart management of growth in our urban centres and Niagara Falls has an opportunity to depart that by using our existing historical buildings in the downtown for growth and to protect our green spaces. Downtown Niagara Falls can become a focal point for community involvement through arts and culture, through programmes for children, by growing small businesses, local businesses, and by providing fundraising opportunities for our local charities. Downtown should be a place for the community, for our residents. A healthy downtown will protect property values and the quality of life in the surrounding residential neighbourhoods around the downtown. And by providing a home for our local merchants, sixty cents of every dollar spent in their establishments will stay in the community as opposed to six cents of every dollar spent at a big box retailer. Those are staggering numbers in my mind and they are true numbers. Moving on, why we should, why I think it's important that we learn from others. There have been a lot of communities across North America that have been revitalising over the past thirty years and we've been researching all of these to come up with what we think is a workable, realistic vision of how we should revitalise the downtown of Niagara Falls. In doing that, we have come across what are proclaimed as the eight principles of success for revitalisation. First, it takes a new way of thinking. We can't keep doing what we're doing and expect the result to be any different than it has been to date. That's most important. Progress has to be incremental. We have to walk before we run. The Big Bang approach to revitalisation is clearly not for this community. And we have to help ourselves. If we as a community don't take the bull by the horn and lead the revitalisation in the direction we want it to go, nobody else is going to do it for us. Partnership between the city and the community and stakeholders in the downtown is the only way revitalisation has been successful in other communities and we would like to bring that here into Niagara Falls. We have to identify and capitalise on our existing assets, of which I think Niagara Falls has many. And when we do revitalise, it's important that we do it first, the first time. We won't get another chance at doing it again. We need to do it in the best possible way. A comprehensive approach is really important because when you're looking at revitalisation, doing any one of the things that are critical to revitalisation at one time will not stand on its own. You need to go and attack on all fronts in order to give the mass the momentum that's required to be successful in revitalisation. And at the end of the day, what we need to do is to get started. We need to implement it. Let's get going. We need to see results. We need to see facades that are redone. We need to see buildings that are renovated. We need to see results in the downtown. From my last slide, we talked about partnerships and I can't emphasise that enough. We see the key as being a partnership between the DIA, the city, the community. Siminelli is, is here as a partner in terms of development manager, project manager. And we are seeking to partner with many others. We think this is the core group that you see up there, but there will be many other people that we would like to see partner with us. And that will include community leaders, that will include all the existing businesses, new businesses that we bring into the downtown and groups like the Community Futures Development Coordination Corporation. Coincidentally, this is a group currently based in Port Colbrun who has recently had their mandate expanded to include Niagara Falls. They are federally funded, it's an economic development agency, and they have tremendous resources available to bring into play in our revitalisation effort. And I will tell you a little bit more about that in a few minutes in one of my next slides. We think that in many respects, council has been right. We do not think that a parking garage should be built now. We think that a major restructuring of the eastern gateway is unnecessary. We think a community-driven revitalisation does not require a developer agreement. We don't need new sidewalks at this point. And we don't require new development to revitalise the downtown. In fact, we think it would be damaging at this time. We would like to see the city lands used to support our revitalisation effort by providing parking, green space and access to the downtown. And then finally, it's our intention to do everything through an open book approach. We'll share everything we're doing and planning, and what we're planning to do. We are always open to talk about what we're doing and in any case, through our partnership with the city and with all of the stakeholders in this, we will have an ongoing dialogue. There will be no secrets. How do we think we can make the downtown happen right now? We think that the CIP must be revisited to make it more functional for all of the owners. No activity today and the CIP says that it isn't working. Building size and age vary- Building size and age vary greatly in the downtown, and $10,000 is a drop in the bucket for many buildings to redo their facade. Think of some of the buildings, like the Rosberg Building, where $10,000 won't even provide you with a coat of paint. The city should provide support for the arts, culture, and events in the downtown that will engage the community, bring the residents of Niagara Falls back to the downtown. Instead of spending big bucks on infrastructure, we believe the dollars should be spent on lighting upgrades, benches, garbage receptacles, good surface parking, good signage, and perhaps something like renewable sidewalks that can be used to expand the sidewalks wherever needed to provide outdoor seating for restaurants and cafes, rather than having it hard-built into the sidewalks. It gives us flexibility. What are we doing? We are putting our money where our mouth is, and the BIA is investing in. A new resource center that will be located in a storefront property will be open to the public. We will have full-time staffing that can provide updates on the downtown, leasing information, business startup packages and counseling, assistance with applications for the CIP, and information on upcoming events that we're planning for the downtown. The CFDC will be participating in the center by providing staff of their own on-site two or three days a week. They are able to provide small business loans to small companies that may not otherwise be able to get funding through normal channels. They will track the economic impact of the work we do and the dollars we spend in the downtown, and they will assist us in the coordination. They have spent a tremendous amount of effort and money in working on some of the events that are taking place in Port Colborne, and they participate in some of the stuff that's happened in Welland, and they are very eager and looking forward to participating in downtown Niagara Falls. We're building a revitalization team that to date includes people like Ed Lustig, former CAO of Niagara Falls as an advisor, Yuri Burson, a professional urban designer with a master's degree in urban design and 25 years of experience working on revitalizations in over 150 communities in Ontario, is working with us on almost a full-time basis. Ramondo Architects, who as you probably know have an office in the downtown and have revitalized, owned and have to revitalize their own building in downtown, and Shane Sargent, an event coordinator, who's planned some very successful events down the Port Colborne and Welland area. These folks are working right now, many of them full-time on our projects, and will continue to work with us, and we will continue to build our team over the next couple of months. Most importantly, we're spending our dollars now to move the revitalization forward, and we're looking for support from the city. So respectfully, our request is that council, direct city staff to review our proposal and ultimately to make recommendations to council. And who's that gentleman right there? Anybody you recognize? Yeah, there you go. That was an important, that was an important date in our downtown when the acres still were built.
Thank you, Luriki.
Thank you.
We have questions from members of council, I know, and I appreciate the new approach that the BIA is taking, Downtown BIA, and I appreciate the fact you came, you came tonight to share with us your new direction, and I know there's some optimism certainly within the BIA, and I think that members of council will share in some of that. So, Councilor Iannelli, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we go back to the council is right slide? That's right. Because there are four of us sitting around this table who spent months and months and months being targets of attack ads telling us how wrong we were in our position before us now, but I'm thrilled to see, but you know, if you hold state, we got it!
All right.
Hold state through tough times, and you know what? If you really believe in a position, stick to it. We really believe, despite the tens and tens of thousands of dollars in attack ads that the BIA ran, that we were justified in the position we took. But I'm willing to put that aside.
Thank you.
Well, to start it, and I know in our telephone conversation...
Thank you, that's what we like to do.
Not so much thrilled, but Mr. Satil opened this with, with I think something that I can believe in. And you know, some of your slides came up, and I've been having flashbacks to 20 months ago, and a different presenter here, but I'll say that I like the fact that your new realistic, and I'm being subtle, on your new realistic vision shows no huge amount of taxpayers' dollars, because I think we were pretty clear, and the election made it very clear, that the residents don't want millions upon millions of tax dollars spent down here. You know, I'm glad to hear that. I like to see that there's no expropriation, that would, pardon me?
I'm not glowing.
I'm not glowing. That there'll be no expropriation, because that was really important to people whose properties they really thought after 80 years they were going to lose. And I mean emotionally, that, that I think is a huge...
Fall was one of them.
Yeah, and I understand that. We spoke to them through the election also, and that we have a shared vision. We always did have a shared vision. It was just looked at on two different, two different standpoints. I like the fact that you entitled it "A New Affordable Tomorrow." I realize you've learned from the experience of others, your tact is entirely different. I like ongoing dialogues, no new secrets. I mean, when you ask somebody sitting in front of council where your money's coming from and who your investors are, it has to be open and accountable. It has to be transparent. People aren't calling you guys to say, "Where are you spending our money?" They're calling the aid of us, and that would give us the opportunity to do this. I do have one question. Why do you not believe that the CIP is equitable? Because I thought we passed a CIP that we could afford to pass. So my concern is, at that point, what do you not think is, what do you think is not equitable?
We think that the CIP as it stands right now, it's the same dollars for every single building in the downtown. And if you look at the buildings in the downtown, we have done a survey of the downtown, there is a very broad range of size of building, quality and condition of building, and frankly, there are many owners in the downtown that simply can't afford to redo their facades or do the building renovations that they would like to do, because the CIP just doesn't give them enough funds to be able to do it. So what we're proposing is, if you can channel more dollars through the CIP, that will be allocated to the buildings that need them. What happens there is that the owners will spend their money first, and then the city will add their dollars. So it's a way that the city can actually spend some money in the revitalization of downtown, but you're not investing in an infrastructure fund. We have to do the work first. The owners of downtown have to do the work first. Then the city will contribute their part of it. We think that there's a better formula that could be used for allocating those funds.
And you do understand with, we paid for our consultant's report that came in and told us exactly where our perimeter should be, which so that the residents know, were totally contrary to the presentation and the request towards council from before. So you will work within the perimeters that our, that our consultant's report told us that we can, and you will work within the perimeters that we can afford to invest into our CIP?
Absolutely. And that's something that we would like to work with city on. We have some ideas and formulas that might work better. We have already done a survey of all the downtown buildings, so we know how many there are, how big they are. So if we can sit down with staff and work through this, hopefully we can come up with a solution that will work for everybody.
Well, I have to say, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, my, my back went up immediately the last presentation we had in regards to the downtown. It went strictly downhill from there. But actually, listening to Mr. Satil and bringing in local residents, not somebody from, you know, another country giving us a tap dance, I think that this is something that maybe we could get all the residents behind. When you're not digging $30 million deep into people's pockets, they tend to have a different perception as to what they will support. And, you know, just to put my faith in what I think is a revitalized effort, I have no problem if you're looking for a council member to sit on the revitalization team, to be that member of council, because you want to drive an affordable, an affordable, reasonable, CIP-driven revitalization downtown. I'm behind you 100%, but I don't ever want to go back to the atmosphere that we had before, are we? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor DiDaddi?
Thank you, Your Worship. A few questions specific to your presentation. One was, and by the way, thanks very much, it was very nice and, it was nice and balanced. When would we expect to see first facades done? That's been the big question people have raised, and the ongoing discussion, and we said this to the last developers, are you going to do a building? When are you going to do one? Just do one, just one. Okay? Realistic, but when realistically could we expect to see something?
Realistically, our expectation is that within the next 12 months, we should be able to complete at minimum 50% of the facades in the downtown.
Just 15 or 50?
50. 50%.
Okay, that's, that's a really good answer. Thank you. Next question, see if I go two for two for good answers. Well, actually, next question is, now, the facade, the way I understand it now, it works out to be approximately through the CIP, $10,000 that you'll get back, but you don't get it until after you do it.
Right.
Okay, so no money upfront.
Right.
You got to do it first and then...
Exactly.
What's the actual cost approximately to do a facade? Do you know that number approximately, a range or average?
That number varies greatly, and in fact, I refer to Yuri Burson, that's a gentleman that I was talking about that has the masters in urban design, and he's been taking a survey of all of the facades in the downtown, and he has done many of these. Oh, Yuri, what would you say is an average cost?
Will you come forward, please, a little further?
Very good question, by the way, thank you. Yuri Burson, urban designer. As Luriki mentioned, the, the project is concentrating on the buildings of the downtown. And to answer your question directly, she said that there are a range of buildings in downtown. There's a Satil building, it's a 30 large building. There's smaller shops that have 6 feet of frontage. That's for sort of $10,000 type of improvement. So basically, it ranges. Really, there is no one answer. To answer it directly, it could be $10,000, it could be $100,000. But what is the important thing is that the owners are going to be the ones first to make the investment, and the facade drawings and designs are going to be given to them, and they are going to be actually driving the process. Council is going to see what is going to happen out there, and hopefully, good things, and many facades are being redone and rehabbed. That then creates an environment of change. Hey, what's happening? Things actually are changing. We don't believe it. If the Satil building is done next spring or summer, you're looking right at it every day. They can't wait to get started. So it's a range of numbers. It can go from, you know, very small amount to hundreds of thousands, but what we're going to try to be is very, very pragmatic. Does that answer your question, Phil?
Yes, that's good. Thank you. Thank you. No more questions, Your Worship. In regard to the, so I understand, if I understand correctly, what you're saying with the CIP, what you're issued or challenged with it is that if it's $10,000, you can't equally apply that to a little building as you would to like Rosberg's.
Correct.
So you're going to have to base it on something, square footage, linear footage, frontage, something like that.
Right.
All right. Paul, Your Worship, when the time comes, I'd be willing to refer this to staff for consultation with the, with the group.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. I guess I'd just like to start off by saying that I don't think, Your Worship, that there's anyone around the table that has ever been opposed to the revitalization of downtown. I think that we've only, in my opinion, had different mindsets, I guess, on how we're actually going to get there. And with that said, Your Worship, I just wanted to simply thank Mrs. Gross for being here tonight and for her approach. I find it very refreshing, Your Worship, and not only refreshing, but I also find it very commendable. It's commendable, Your Worship, because it is no secret that at one point, council and the downtown BIA were on opposite sides of the spectrum. We were on opposite side, Your Worship, but I guess it's our hope that in the future we'll be on the same side. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor DiDaddi?
Worship, then I would make the motion that we refer Mr. Staff to come back to us with some recommendations.
Counselor Peter Angelo? Certainly. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. May we further discussion? Call the vote, always in favor. Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. Thank you, Luriki, and thank you to members of BIA. Okay, at this time, members of council, I'd like to ask the court to introduce the next item on the agenda.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning by law at 6,000 Marineland Parkway to permit a proposed residential development consisting of singles, townhouses, and apartments. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 31, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the official plan and zoning by law amendment or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
This time, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Arberson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The first application this evening, as described by Mr. Yofita, is involving the Thundering Waters Golf Course and the introduction of a variety of dwellings in that development. This is a pair of photographer, photography shot of the golf course, the proximity of the residential homes to the north, and the railway spur through the middle. The location of the subject lands are just south of the city's residential areas. To the west, we have a large industrial district, also to the south and to the east, largely industrial, and the Thundering Waters project includes these lands and then lands to the The applicant proposes to redesign and zone portions of the existing golf course on the site for residential development with a mix of dwelling types. Proposed development consists of 85 single detached dwellings, 35 townhouse dwellings, and a 10-story apartment building containing 150 units. Current submission shows general improvements to the overall development design since the original submission was made. I'm going to go through some iterations here just to describe to council how the application has evolved over a period of time. The original application was submitted in November 13, 2006. The preliminary plan at that time was comprised of 26 singles, 148 townhouses, and a 9-story, 150-unit apartment building. And you notice the configuration of the proposed mix. The townhouses were created along the north boundary line for all intents and purposes. The apartment building, similarly, is all shown in red or orange, and the single family detached houses were located north of the interior of the proposed subdivision. On June 20, 2007, after considerable study by staff and comments from agencies, revised plans were submitted, and they altered the form of development. This revised plan included a composition of 74 singles, 35 townhouses, and a 10-story, 100-unit higher building. And you notice that the major change at this point in time was to locate the lower-density forms of development up on the north boundary line, which would be compatible with the existing houses along that boundary line, and more of the higher-density uses north of the interior of the site. Area residents were notified of this application. The council deferred consideration of the application on August 13, 2007, to enable a neighborhood meeting with area residents. On August 21st, 2007, a neighborhood meeting was held. The developer's planning consultant conducted the neighborhood meeting. Approximately 40 residents attended, and residents expressed strong opposition to the loss of trees, particularly along the Golden Park boundary line. Other concerns raised by area residents included proposed rear yards of lots extending north of the existing tree line, the height of the 10-story apartment building, the noise emanating from the golf course operations of cells, and problem with the short nose that was given. The consultant planner advised our residents that their concerns would be reviewed by the developer. This meeting tonight, September 24th, is a further iteration of the proposed plan. The developer, having heard the comments of area residents, having considered the comments of... of staff and various agencies, are now proposing, and this has been duly advertised, a composition comprised of eighty-five singles, thirty-five townhouses, and one ten-story apartment building with one hundred and fifty units. Now, you'll notice that some additional features have been added to the plan, the plan configuration has changed. The single-family houses are still used to, close to the north boundary line where the existing houses are located. The multiples are towards the interior of the design. Changes have been made to the road system connecting directly on the Drummond Road and directly on to the entranceway of the golf course, and it provides better circulation A number of important improvements to the overall design have been made since the original submission. I'm shaking my head myself, again, the single-family lots are proposed along the north and west property boundaries. This has been done to provide compatibility with the nearby residential uses. The rear lot lines no longer extend past the north tree line. If you recall, there was an extension of the lots well into the area to the north and rear yards were intended to be used for residential purposes. That aspect has been eliminated. Trees along the existing north fence and west fence boundary of the golf course will be included in a conservation easement for protection. In other words, if you recall that green strip, this will be a conservation easement and that easement will be over and above normal zoning protection. The sixty-five foot wide corridor across the north limit of the plan will be maintained as an open space area and will be regenerated with trees under future condominium ownership. Several improvements have been made to the road layouts and connections to improve traffic flow and adjust emergency access. The higher-density residential components have been positioned internal to the site, one thousand feet, the apartment building is one thousand feet from the existing dwellings to the north. The apartment's height and density is considered appropriate, given the distance separation, buffering, and the green space to be retained. Overall, the tree preservation has been impacted by the construction of the golf course itself, provision of maintenance roads and some disease of trees. Nevertheless, the normal reports submitted of the application estimates that approximately forty-four percent of the pre-construction woodlots can be saved with the proposed residential layout. Requirement of a tree saving plan will be implemented at the future condominium approval stage. It's our conclusion that the official plan and zoning provisions will need to be worked out and put in place to fully implement the proposed residential development. The planning report discusses in great detail the types of policies and zoning provisions that will be necessary. It's our recommendation this evening that the iterations of the design have met the planning policies of municipality. They have accommodated very largely the concerns of area residents. We see that it's a balanced type of proposal, something that should be a consideration for council, and on that basis, we're recommending that council approve the official plan amendment. We're also recommending that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment to provide site-specific provisions for the various housing components, and that zoning bylaw will also include a holding provision to address issues of compatibility between the residential area and the surrounding industrial lands. And this is a recommendation act that was made by the region and we're incorporating that recommendation into our recommendations on zoning. Those are our submissions, as to get...
Thank you very much, Mr. Darbison. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Just like to remind you, you're certainly welcome to speak and make your presentation. We have a ten-minute limit and we'd like you to introduce yourselves and state your name and address for the record, and if you could avoid the repetitious comments, if you hear somebody ahead of you making those comments, council would appreciate your cooperation and just bringing new evidence or new matters forward. So you're welcome to speak and who'd ever like to come first, please come forward. Yes, Mr. Stewart? Welcome.
Worship? For the record? Jim Stewart, 5996 Windsor Drive, North Falls. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak here this evening. On behalf of the residents of Drummond, Wildrose, Crimson, Hemlock, and Deerbrook Streets, we have mainly two main objections to this application. Possible destruction, destruction of the existing tree land, nor the petition of the land, and according to the quest of tree preservation plan, the accepted and registered on title core, as contained on page seven of a letter received by City Council on September 24th, the recommendation that the land be placed in an appropriate environmental protection area. Therefore, my question to you would be, will this accomplish our goal in preserving the trees now and in the future for the subject homeowners? Secondly, the construction of a ten-story, one hundred and fifty unit apartment building of approximately a hundred to a hundred and twenty feet in height is too high and unnecessary, and we're asked for the single building of five to six stories to be constructed so as to protect our privacy.
Yes, Counselor? Do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for you to Mr. Stewart.
I don't know if he's finished his presentation.
Yeah, I have a question for him. When you, when you gave the names of the streets to it here, are you here representing the number of people on the petition? Are you the general spokesperson?
Seem to be.
You seem to be, okay. So, so you and I had a conversation together a number of times today, and when I steered you to page seven, your concern was would that, when I spoke to you, said you had no objections to the approval, that you wanted the trees preserved on title so that someone can't come along down the road and cut down the eighty to a hundred, hundred-foot trees? So, his question to me on the phone today was, would, would the protected easement that they're talking about, the environmentally protected part of trees, would that accomplish the exact same thing as registering on title, the inability to cut those trees? And I spoke to one of the agents today who said, we're not going to register it on title. What we will do is provide the easement. So, he was confused, and I just want to make sure I wasn't confused today, and three to Mr. Darbison. Mr. Darbison, will that do exactly what Mr. Stewart and his group are looking for? Would that preserve the area of trees that they were most concerned about?
Mr. Darbison?
Three, Mr. Mayor, that's a question that's best answered by our solicitor, but I can, I can answer your question this way. The lands, the trees, the lands and the regeneration area are lands that can be designated and zoned for that purpose, in other words, zoning protection is part of a large planning regulation. And on top of that, the conservation easement is a further protection, but that easement is under the responsibility of the condominium ownership itself. Not a physical easement, it's a condominium easement, and that's why I think Mr. Stewart answered that as a good aspect of the question.
Thank you. Let's see if we can get that question answered, but let's let Mr. Stewart make his presentation and we'll have his answer for you.
Well, the presentation is primarily finished, Your Worship, but going back to what you just said, I have a feeling that the tree preservation plan should be adopted and should be registered on title, so that we do have protection from future purchases.
Yeah, we'll see if we can get an answer while our solicitor stepped over the room. He should be back shortly. So, Mr. Stewart, we'll progress with the rest of the presenters and we'll get an answer for you before the meeting's over. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a presentation this evening? Other than the applicant? Yes, please come forward.
Jim Grandoni, 4810 Durham Road, Niagara Falls, Blue Route Number One.
Mrs. Grandoni, could you just speak a little louder, please? We can't hear you.
It's working.
It's working, but you just have to speak a little louder, please.
I have a question to the engineer, and that is, will the trunk sanitary sewer traversing the golf course service this development? Will it be part of it?
Mr. Willey, could you address that, please?
For Your Worship, yes, as contained in the report, they will have to construct their own local systems, but they will be using the trunk sanitary sewers underneath the area for the servicing.
Okay, and does it have capacity?
Once again, as indicated in the report, there is capacity in the system.
Okay, on your agenda tonight, you have a municipal works, at least on your municipal works agenda, as you report, MW 2007-108 on page three, under combined sewer separation program. It says, "The combined sewer overflow, CSL, located in the trunk sewer inside the Thundering Waters Golf Course, and in black, it's known as the Talus Creek Overflow, also showed evidence of surcharging." Does that not mean that it's discharging into the environment and does not have capacity?
Mr. Willey?
For Your Worship, yes, what that means is during water events, we have rocks, we have that throughout the city. If that were the case, then there would be no development in the city of Network Falls that could take place until we got the hold for during water events.
Thank you.
I have some other comments. On the bottom of page three of tonight's report, PD 2007-3, this is the proposal, there appears to be contradiction between the region's environmental comments and those of the Conservation Authority. The region says there does not appear to be any impact on wetlands through the proposed development, however, significant tree losses will result. And yet, the Conservation Authority in the letter, they were originally considering the wetlands in this forest, and yet now they're saying, summarized on page four of your report, it says, under NPCA summary by staff, it says, "An inspection by the NPCA determined that an hardened portion of the site, no longer," which means at one time it did, "exhibits a vegetative community indicative of a wetland. Therefore, the proposed residential development will not significantly impact any remaining wetland features on the subject lands." To me, the Conservation Authority is contradicting itself and the region is contradicting the Conservation Authority. We've had comments here from planners, engineers, ecologists, but not one unbiased forester. That's been the case from the beginning. And I think that the Conservation Authority is suggesting that we make a bad situation worse. And I'd like to know how much more forest or how many more trees are going to be built on? What's the acreage that we're losing with this new housing development?
I'm not sure if we can answer that question. Mr. Darbison or Mr. Willey?
Well, have a detailed presentation by the developer and let that answer how it gets to the bottom, okay?
Because one option not considered, I mean, it would be in keeping with provincial forestry policy and the provincial policy statement, would be to revert to forest if you don't need the golf course. The problem is spending money on a care-alien recovery program, and your own urban woodlot study recognize expansion of existing forests, not continuing destruction. There was significant trees in this forest, and I know I'm coming late on the scene, but we were busy trying to save another one in our own area, and when I see what's going on here, it was the same thing that happened with our forest. Public should not be having to do this. The agencies responsible are not doing their job. And I'm not happy with the Conservation Authority's letter on this, and it's unfortunate that the region has delegated Conservation Authority with the responsibility of enforcing the tree by, tree bylaw. They say that there's other options here, and there's a lot of trees along Dorchester Road, or is it, you know, St. Drummond, that in my mind should be preserved as well. And I don't think you're going to be able to save them because of the interference with the tree, because the lots are kind of small along.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present other than the proponent who wishes to speak to this matter this evening? Please come forward, sir. Yes, please come forward.
My name is John Henderson, I live at SL 34, Robbins Crescent, right in the middle of that, of the golf course on the north side there. Originally, there was two hydrolines running down to that side behind our property. We took one out because we understand it belonged to the golf course. The existing tree line comes up to, or the existing golf course fences at the tree line, and then a hundred feet south of that used to be hydroline, which we understand belongs to the golf course. In the presentation, are they trying to imply that they're going to replant trees in that zone? It's a question, yeah.
Mr. Darbison, could you respond to that, please?
Yes, yes, the answer to that question is yes. That, it's actually sixty-four feet of land that runs along the hydro corridor, just south of the hydro corridor, sixty-four feet, and it is owned by the developer. And when the residents were concerned about the rear yards of houses beyond the limit area, that was, that was one of the fundamental revisions that we made of the plan, to make the rear yards of property consistent with the tree line, and anything beyond that along that corridor would be under common ownership by the condominium corporation. And the notion of this application now is to allow that area to regenerate for the trees.
So basically what you're saying, they're gonna essentially tear down the existing hundred-foot trees that are inside the fence line of the golf course and replant trees on that sixty-four-foot section, which will take another forty years to get to a hundred feet?
No, no, that's not what I said. There's a conservation easement to protect the existing band of trees that are there now.
Yeah, you said you're gonna take the property line to the existing fence line of the golf course, which is where all the trees are. And then sixty-four feet north of that, they're gonna replant trees.
If you look at the, the, this final revision, there's a, the green yard is comprised of two, it's called them bands, where the existing trees are now, that would be a conservation easement, and we zone environmental protection area and apply conservation easement to protect the existing trees, the existing tree band. Beyond that, to the north, would be a regeneration area.
Then we would actually gain another sixty-four feet of trees.
That's right.
Plus, some of the existing trees we've removed.
Okay, I'm trying to understand that, thank you. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak further? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak further? Yes, sir?
My name is Ben Judy, 6201 Curium. I was just wondering about Drummond Road. There's a ditch there. Will that be strong to put through there or will that just be done?
Mr. Willey, can you just stand, please?
For Your Worship, as indicated in the report, we haven't discussed any of the detailed site servicing plans at this time. If that will sit down, if this is approved tonight, they will then sit down for developers and look at the detailed servicing for this development and look at the long-term plan, and then determine what the long-term plans are for Drummond Road and how best to service this area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this evening for this We have a question for our city solicitor, Mr. Beaman. You were out of the room when this question was posed, it's with regard to the conservation of the trees and what limits the city can undertake to ensure that the tree, trees are maintained there.
Well, we have our regular developer powers and we have our zoning powers, each of which can be used in different ways to preserve the natural area. The, when I read into the report, it's somewhat, I think it's a little different than, I like it, the poll is going about doing it, but I'm sure we can work something out. Certainly, the conservation easement seems to have processed, that's something. It's the next, uh, I found the whole, but I think we want that to be owned by the condominium, so how I would propose that we actually get the trees, it would be in the zone of open space so that you can put any development, and that would be the condominium owner, but the zoning restriction would allow regeneration of the natural area.
I think Mr. Stewart's concern was that the agreement be binding, well, the covenant be binding upon subsequent owners and...
If we made it a zoning bylaw, I would make it definitely binding upon the subsequent owner, and it would be, I think, as good as any agreement, and of course, I keep it because it's a zoning bylaw, and that would usually kind of use investigation terms and so on, of course, so that's, when we're doing, if we made an agreement, certainly we could make it, we could populate the terms of condominium agreement, so we can submit to here. terms of condominium agreement, so the subdivision here would be binding on the owners of the land, be registered and enforce it against subsequent owners. There's some debate as to whether it's permanent or 20 years, I don't know, Mr. Stewart, but subdivision could be just...
Mr. Stewart, does that answer your question?
For the most part, yes, through your worship. The main concern of our residents are that we do not want to lose the tree line. It's fundamental importance to not only us as the property owners, but also to the environment. And if there's some way that we can ensure that these trees in fact do stay and that there is some regeneration on the north side of the tree line, then it's fair. We welcome that. But I would like to be sure that now owners, developers, and any subsequent owners are held responsible. And in one form or another, we have something registered on title which we're insured at. Not the premise of someone, a company's, going to happen or will happen. We need something definite, and I think we have a hard time for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Beaman?
Just as a matter of course, any agreements that the city enters into with any loan program, any type of, we always do that. So that's particularly concerning, we'll be addressed in the moment.
I presume, Mr. Beaman, it wouldn't be unlike a drainage requirement or covenant, where it does stay on the land, the covenant is maintained by subsequent owners, so...
The access, access agreements or the requirements that the building, in certain places, are there.
Good, thank you. So I'll ask once again, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak this evening? Yes, please come forward.
Hello. Um, my big concern...
Your name, please, your address.
Oh, sorry, Carolyn Woodley, 7468 Alex Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, my big concern is the height of the apartment. Not back on, it's to be, to be where the trees are, but there, we had a notice in our mailbox that there is another one, just a little bit further along by Marineland that would like to have a 10-story. A lot of us have driven around and had a look at the sizes of the apartments within the residential areas, and most of them are below five feet.
Five feet, five stories?
Yeah, five stories, sorry. Five stories. So my concern is once you approve one, that it will be, that it will be an escalating thing that perhaps could get higher.
Well, I think we're dealing with this application, ma'am, say, I'd like to just focus on the application.
Yeah, well, that is application, has a 10-story.
Sure, sure. And that's what we're doing, but I don't think we should be putting anybody into jeopardy with any speculative proposals that may come forward, and we're not dealing with those at this point. So we appreciate your comments with regard to this building, so if you could focus on this, your concern about the height, the 10-story height?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Once again, I'll ask, is there anyone further who'd like to speak for this matter? Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask the applicant to come forward, or his representative, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm with council staff. Just wanted to begin tonight by mentioning that it's Councilor Thompson's birthday. I just wanted to wish him a happy birthday. The reason why I know that is because it's my husband's birthday two days from now and I can't forget his.
I act for the applicant, falls to your golf name, the registered owner of the subject land. Mr. Rick Brady, the project planner, is also here tonight. We reviewed the staff report and agree with the recommendations listed therein, save and accept for one minor issue with respect to rear yard setbacks for the proposed single detached lots. As you noted from the staff report, the application was initially submitted on November 13th, 2006. The applicant and Mr. Brady have been working very closely with staff since that date and have arrived at this plan submitted for approval tonight. A meeting was held on August 21st of this year. Several of the residents attended and we heard their concerns loud and clear. The neighbors did not wish to see any development occur between the proposed conservation easement and the backyards on Wildbilly's Crescent. For this reason, my client went back to the proverbial drawing board and designed the plan presented tonight. This plan was forwarded to the residents on September the 6th. We believe that the revised plan will appease their concerns. The applicant has extended the depth of the conservation easement to the north property boundary line, and therefore there will be no development north of the tree line. And as you've just heard, the regeneration of the lands to the north will also enhance further tree growth in that area. However, there is one minor zoning detail requiring an amendment from the staff's proposed zoning bylaw provisions, and that is with respect to the proposed rear yard setbacks for the single detached lots. The staff report on page five suggests that the standard 7.5 meter or 24.6 foot rear yard depth for a private amenity area will be required from the rear lot line or the boundary of any conservation easement. My client does not agree with this provision. Given that the conservation area varies in depth from approximately 26.6 feet to 36.6 feet, and given that the proposed lots, 21 through 31 inclusive, those are the middle lots, are much less deep than the remainder of the other lots, we are requesting that there be no rear yard setback imposed for those lots over and above the conservation easement, and that the rear yard setback for the remainder of the single detached lots be five meters rather than 7.5 meters over and above the conservation easement, given the buffering enhancements of the conservation easement and the area that's noted as Block A. I spoke with planning staff late last week and earlier today, and this did not appear to be problematic. Therefore, in conclusion, we kindly request that the minor amendment be made to the proposed rear yard setback for the proposed single detached lots and that you approve the application. My client agrees with the other proposed zoning bylaw provisions contained within the staff report, and we respectfully request that the final details of the proposed zoning bylaw be worked out between staff and the applicant. With respect to the question with Mr. Stewart, with respect to the trees and the preservation of the trees, the tree preservation plan will be conducted and included in the, I'm sorry, will be conducted at the condominium stage and will be included in the condo plan or the site plan that's registered on the property at that time. To my knowledge, I cannot believe there is a way of actually registering an agreement with respect to tree preservation other than that plan. The Block A, which is 64 feet in width, at one point in time, we had discussed possibly dedicating that or conveying that to the city, however, I'm not sure if that's still a possibility to be discussed or not. City would then control that area as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, members of council, any questions of Ms. Gobertie with respect to the application? Counselor Ring?
Uh, yes, a few questions. I heard over the summer from a lot of residents who were very concerned about the tree line, and I noted that a lot of the letters mentioned that they're already getting bothered by noise from golf course operations, leaf blowing, grass cutting, that sort of thing, and I could see where the tree line was eroded, that it would be less buffering, and then they'd suffer even more from noise. Is the, are the existing trees in the north being preserved all that?
Well, the existing trees, the neighbors refer to as the tree line, are located within this conservation easement. Therefore, all of that buffering that was talked about is included in that. Those will not be touched.
Okay, the region in the July 27th letter said the proposed development will result in a significant loss of tree cover.
Not in that conservation easement area. There may be trees in other areas that would have to be removed, but not in that buffer zone.
Okay, so how much tree cover are we looking at losing?
I don't know the amount of trees, but the study was conducted by Lisa Campbell, biologist who has reviewed that, who has reviewed the plan and has found a problem, to my knowledge, with respect to removal of the proposed trees that we're referring to.
Okay, I'm still worried about losing any mature trees in the Carolinian Forest area. Okay, the other concerns were the, I pulled out my municipal, like, community services agenda, and I hadn't even caught that, the combined sewer overflow located in the trunk sewer inside the Thundering Waters Gulf Coast also showed evidence of surcharging. I guess this is more for staff. We're looking at adding to the amount of, amount going into that.
Mr. Gilbert.
Possible effects, we've already got a surcharging problem, and you start adding more sewer discharge into that.
First of all, I believe it's stormwater, and most of the time it's dry, is that correct?
Through your worship, yeah, it's not a lot, so we're just doing wet weather events. And as I said before, if that is a concern, this council, that we should stop all development within the city because during wet weather events, not only do we have overflows there, we have overflows along the Nigga River, we have them in sewage treatment, in fact, during any significant rain event. If that, as I said, again, if that is your concern, then I would suggest we stop all development immediately until we adjust those problems.
Okay, so there's no sound reason for this particular sewer to highlight in this report? Okay. The letter was, you know, Councilor Anoni and myself have had email from Drummond Road resident who spoke about construction vehicles using Drummond Road during the construction of the golf course, and apparently they weren't supposed to use Drummond Road, they were supposed to use some alternate route. And she wanted assurances that this would not be happening again. Apparently, there was damage caused to her house, cracks from all the trucks lumbering by. What, what route is the vehicles for this development going, going to use?
That's never been discussed. I believe we'll have to work that out with municipal works as to which route they would prefer to be utilized.
I think this needs to be a part of any approval tonight. There was a problem last time that we're told. Councilor Anoni, can you collaborate further probably, but there's a problem with...
I think you're talking about two different things, you're talking about residential construction as opposed to what went on before, but this subdivision that was created was using Drummond Road many years ago as well. So I know staff has been very diligent in ensuring that our roads are not damaged through the construction process, and anybody like to address that? Mr. Gilbert, there's always an assessment down in the roads, isn't there?
Through your worship, unfortunately, with any type of development that takes place, are you going to have construction equipment on existing roads as development takes place? It's just a fact of what happens when you're doing construction in these areas. Equipment has to get to and from the site, and they will use existing roads to get there. And the cops who, uh, who, uh, takes place about, there are, when we have any agreements in place, uh, cleaning the roads, they would expect to clean up, and there are methods where we can, though, without doing it, the developer won't, from charging developer back, just because of the whole thing.
Okay, because that's one of the concerns that was brought forward to us. I wanted to make sure this was addressed as well.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Anoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Ring's right. When Thundering Waters first proposed and council passed it, Drummond Road was not to be the direct route. One of our staff, and I was trying to find the email while Counselor Ring was speaking, have been dealing endlessly with one resident who has shown, and staff has been out there a dozen times to show, that there's a huge pot hole in front of her house, and every time those construction trucks hit that pot hole, it reverberates through her whole house. We sat there on the porch, the whole house shakes, right down to the foundation and the cracks in the ceiling. Our staff have been out there a number of times. So it's not a new problem, it happened through that whole development. Her point of view, her point at the time was, the residents along Drummond Road were told in a letter, they, that that was not going to be a consistent truck route. So, I mean, correcting her when you don't have the facts in front of you are not the way to go. Maybe just addressing the problem. It's been forever.
We have a representative here, so we can answer the question.
Well, the resident is emailing the representative, the resident was actually at your meeting and did raise the concern. And what I'm saying is, her concern is, if you put development and the construction trucks down that Drummond Road, not only will it be her property, but property along, many properties along there are going to sustain damage. That is trivial to them. It's an ongoing problem, city has a record of it, so all she wanted was that addressed. So saying that, you know, there has to be a construction route, sure there does, but they were told it wouldn't be that way.
You're misunderstanding the point.
No, I understood it.
No, the point is that there's heavy construction trucks that may have been traveling down, moving a lot of fill prior to, and we're not talking about a discovery, is that correct?
No, Mr. Mayor, that was the, that was the issue, Ms. Bain raised at...
You made your point, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that correct?
I think, I think Ms. Bain, is her name? I'm trying to recall the name of the resident who was concerned, but I, I think she would like some reassurances as to what route will be utilized. And at this point in time, I can't comment on that, we would have to speak to municipal works. I don't know if there's other issues with Drummond Road, aside from the use of construction trucks that need to be addressed. But at this point in time, we're nowhere near site plan stage, but we will work with municipal works to find a route that's alternate that would work. But again, that's, I don't know how the developer can, can stop trucks, the developer's not going to be out there and enforcing bylaws or enforcing any trucks from being rooted off that road. So it's going to be an ongoing problem with Drummond Road at all times until we can determine how best to...
Well, Ms. Gilbert, we have arrangements when we have large projects, as you're rather aware. Hydro is doing a project with a tunnel bearing, and we have prescribed route that we have, we've certainly reviewed and audited the road in advance, and they've got a prescribed route. I'm referring to general construction that takes place in a subdivision, much like Alex and Crimson, I recall those years when subtrades drove in, whether they had a machine with them or not, they traveled along the road. And I know that the city has been very diligent, and if there's damage caused, they get onto it, but in this case, we're talking about a lady who said she's had a crack, I'm not sure, in the foundation of her roads, but I guess she could possibly go after the owners of the development and state, file a claim if that's the case. But I'm just trying to be reasonable in respect of the approach, that I don't think we could expect you to warrant wet kind of trucks were traveling up and down Drummond Road in this project.
Correct.
So I think that's the point. Also, Ms. Woodley had a concern with regard to the height of the proposed apartment building. I should ask you, will the apartment building be visible by anybody to the north from the subdivision?
The, the, the building is going to be a minimum 1,000 feet distance away from the closest backyard fence. But I've been told that there is no impact whatsoever on the neighbors, whether it's sound, or noise, or sun, or shadow, there is no impact on the neighborhood in that, in that manner. Is it something that is visually acceptable or aesthetically pleasing? That's all in the eyes of the beholder, I can't answer that.
I guess the question was, she was concerned about the, whether it be visible, can you, would you be able to see through the tree line from the resident's backyard?
Well, we've got trees that are 80 to 100 feet tall. If the 10-story building is about 100 to 120 feet tall, I doubt it would be visible.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other, Ms. Counselor, any other questions? Having seen none then, at this time, I'm going to announce that the public meeting with respect to the proposed official plan in 2019 is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Counselor Anoni?
Mr. Mayor, as long as the residents have the, have the benefit of that tree preservation plan and continue to follow comments here tonight, I'll move the recommendation with that tree preservation in it and alleviate their concerns. So I'll move staff's recommendation.
Counselor DiDali, any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, Mr. Stewart, thank you very much. Thank you again, members of the public, as well as for today. Excuse me?
Hey, public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of vacant land condominium at 2700 New Bern Road. Notice was given by first class now in accordance with the Planning Act on Wednesday, September 5th, 2007, and by casting a sign on the property in question, anyone who wants notice of council's decision shall leave their name on the signing sheets outside the council chamber.
And once again, I'm going to ask the planning director to explain the purpose of this application. application.
Oh, yes, council. The proposal is for a draft plan of vacant condominium that's on the east side of New Bern Road, just south of Mount Rose. This is a location of the, of the lands. We have residential development basically northeast and south, and to the west is vacant lands and designated zone for tourism purposes. Draft proposal to register a vacant land condominium over two point four acres of land to construct twenty-six townhouse units, eighteen units with access from a private driveway and eight units with direct access to New Bern Road. The plan of condominium subdivision will permit individual ownership of each unit to develop, with the private driveway, visitor parking, and some landscape areas shared by the condominium corporation. This is the site plan. We're showing the eight units directly facing New Bern Road and the other units internal to the project. Recent changes to the Planning Act require a public meeting for the condominium subdivision application. This is actually our first public meeting under the revised Planning Act change that requires this public notification and public meeting. It's our standard recommendation that the vacant land condominium be draft approved subject to conditions in the planning report. And I'll point out here that in 2006, actually, the planning approval for the project was given by this council. It was for a townhouse form of development that had two additional units at the time. And that was approved with no appeals. We are now dealing with a plan of condominium to divide those parts into individual parts for individual ownership. Therefore, the planning considerations of this application were duly taken care of in 2006, and now we're dealing with standard conditions approval that deal with the details of the condominium plan. And those are listed in detail in the draft of the planning report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darberson. Are there any questions from any members of council? Okay, I'm going to ask members of the public, you should be advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the interior municipal board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Now, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the draft plan of vacant land condominium. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward to speak to this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to come forward to speak to this matter other than the applicant? And for the third time, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Okay, thank you very much. At this time then, council will hear from the applicant or his representative. Good evening. Good morning. For the record, if you can, I'll just state your name and address, please.
Oh, your worship, Mayor Salsi, members of council. My name is Kurt Klein, sixty-two seventy-nine Edmonds Street.
Thank you.
I'm one of the principals of Klein Building Company, and I'm here today to ask for your support and approval to staff's recommendation for draft plan of vacant land condominium situated at twenty-seven hundred New Bern Road. We believe, as does staff, that the project will be a good fit with the existing residential mix and that the design layout, bungalow style of the project will also be very compatible with the adjacent property owners. Subject to your approval, we will be proceeding to work closely with regional and municipal staff to address the conditions as contained in the report, the appendix of the report. To date, we have submitted site plan, site servicing drawings, grading, drainage plans, and site electrical design layout for approval, and additional plans are underway. With your support, we'd like to finalize these design drawings and obtain necessary approvals this fall so that we can proceed full speed ahead with the project in 2008. Just to tell you briefly about the project, since this is an opportunity, I suppose to promote it a little bit, is that it is a twenty-six unit townhouse project. We are primarily bungalow style units. There will be lots of units available at the project as well. The size of the units will range from just under twelve hundred square feet to sixteen hundred square feet plus. Thirty percent of our units will contain dump cargo garages. And we are in the process of finalizing our price structure, but at this time, I don't have that available since there are some significant cost components that still have to be dealt with. At this time, I'm prepared to address any questions that, that may be specific to our project.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. There are some questions from members of council. I hope Councilor Carrier wishes to ask a question.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Clinton, is similar to the development right next door?
Yes, yes it is.
Wonderful development right next door. It's fabulous development.
Are there any questions from members of council? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Klein. We appreciate your presentation. At this point, the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of vacant land condominium is now concluded. The pleasure of council. This is Councilor Thompson, moved by Councilor Thompson. Sorry. Yes, excuse me for a second. Yes, Mr. Darberson.
Yes. On prior occasion in our last slide, we did mention deletion of part number fourteen, and I just wanted to draw that to council's attention, approve with the condition number fourteen deleted. And I spoke to Kurt regarding this matter, and that is sort of redundant conditions already included in number thirteen.
With regard to the race collection?
Yes, that's right. So Mr. Klein has asked me to bring that to your attention.
Okay, thank you. So council, is that your intention? Councilor Thompson is moved, moved by Councilor Fisher. Okay, any other questions or comments to the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Clark, would you introduce the next, next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of condominium at seventy-fourteen Royal Manor Drive. Notice was not required under the Planning Act but was given as a courtesy to the existing residents on September 12th, 2007. Anyone who wants notice of council's decision shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
And once again, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose of this application. Mr. Darberson?
Members of council, this is a condominium conversion proposal for an existing apartment building that's located at Dorchester Road. Subject lines are located as shown, very close to the intersection of Dorchester and Royal Manor Drive. The property contains thirty-eight units. The applicant prefers to convert the existing thirty-eight unit rental apartment complex into a condominium. The plan of condominium will permit the individual ownership of each unit, while the common areas such as hallways, driveways, and open space would be shared by all of the owners. This is actually the site plan of the project, and essentially there's no change proposed to the site plan. I will note that there will need to be an awareness application for all this project as one of the conditions, as the building needs to be drawn in compliance with the city zoning bylaw. There's no public meeting or notification requirements for a condominium conversion under the Planning Act. However, as Mr. Peter mentioned, this is a courtesy that council extends to the tenants of the units for information purposes and as a courtesy. The owner has also advised that information was provided to the tenants regarding the proposed condominium conversion. It's our recommendation this evening that the plan of condominium be draft approved subject to the standard conditions set out in the planning report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darberson. Are there any questions from members of council? And council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the draft plan of condominium. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Please come forward. Can I just state your name and address, please?
Audrey Green, apartment one oh six, seventy-fourteen Royal Manor Drive. We received the notification from the owner in regards to this change after we received notification from council that this change was being made. So we didn't receive any notification from him until after we knew about it from, from city council. And so we were quite astounded when we heard that our homes were possibly going under, undergoing way change. We did receive a note from him, and we are not quite sure how to understand it because he says that everything will remain the same. And yet he says that this will allow for individual ownership of the units. But we're under a lease right now, and we're not under ownership, and he says nothing will change. So we're not sure how to take that. Plus, the apartment building is up for sale, with prospective owners having been through. So we're not sure that what is going with this owner would hold for the other owners. If the condominium change was made, would we still have apartments or would we have to move out if we couldn't afford to pay for condominiums if it was switched over? We really enjoy our apartments that we're in. There are several of us that are on fixed incomes or disabilities. We've been able to make our homes there. We really enjoy it and enjoy living in the city. I don't work in the city, but I have very much enjoyed living here in the last couple of years. Some of the specific things that we are, even if it was to go forward and some of those things were addressed, is will there be condo fees added to our, to our leases? Will there be utilities added to our leases? Because right now, that is inclusive in our rent. And on top of that, will there be improvements made to the existing property? Some of the apartments are in really, really bad shape. And as a condominium property, I would anticipate that it would be in better shape than what building is in. And so there's several different things that we, we really have some concerns about. And I'm just not sure what direction, about a switch in this type of zoning into that. He says that the leases will remain the same, that they will stay intact, but the leases are verbal, they're not written. And so we do not have a written lease agreement. He chooses, we've gone by a verbal lease agreement, and that's been going with the apartment, and that's gone, that goes for many apartments, and you don't have much choice when that's the way that your apartment goes. But when it's going to switch into condominium ownership and he says the lease will remain, what assurance do you have especially when it's going to be sold?
Okay, we'll see if there's any questions to answer on the screen. Thank you. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak tonight to this matter? Is there anyone other than applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? And for the third time, is there anyone other than applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? If not, then we'll hear from the applicant. If you can, I'll just come forward, please. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. I'm Robert Mills, one of the owners of Royal Manor Apartments. I live at seven zero five eight Ridge at Crescent in Niagara Falls. We've been owning and managing this building for over ten years. Actually, my wife's been the one largely responsible for taking care of it. And we have decided to build a route of going from condominium for the ability to have a tax status that's more favorable taxation under the condominium ownership and, and a long-term possibility of selling condominium units. I'm sure the city staff could answer a lot of the questions that Audrey has raised. I do want to address one though. She said that a lot of the units were in very bad shape. I really disagree with that. In fact, Joyce Turner over here in the red sweaters, one of our people making sure that they are all in excellent shape. It's, it's a lovely building. All of the residents have been there for a long time, and the general atmosphere in the building is, is great. All of the tenants are protected under the Landlord and Tenant Act and carrier legislation. So as far as, I would want to assure Audrey that there will not be any change in her status, whether there's a verbal lease, written lease. Point is, if they're sitting there renting the unit, they're protected under the Landlord and Tenant Act, and their rents can only be increased as allowed under the tenant increase guidelines issued each year. So there will be no condo fees or utility charges or improvement levies other than could be approved by the Landlord and Tenant Agency. So respectfully, I propose that application be approved, and thank you for your time in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other questions from members of council? Yes, Councilor DiDadi?
Your worship, just one question for Mr. Mills. You mentioned that you're one of the owners of that company. Are there any principals of your entire limited company?
Yes, there's a, four of us have owned it for the last ten years, the same group.
Thank you. Your worship, through to the staff, I'd ask right around three other names besides Mr. Mills, the application.
Who are you posing a question to?
Well, to which other staff would handle the administration of the application? Legal, I suppose?
Okay, but perhaps, disagreeing or...
Legal does not handle the administration of these applications. I'll commit to time.
Mr. Darberson?
Yes, yes. Further to council direction, we're looking for the names of owners of the number companies. We did ask the question, Mr. Mills put his name down. We did prod him to ask about partnerships and so forth. So we did try to achieve the council's direction of finding out who the principal owns behind the company, the number company.
If you'd like to know, I mean, it's not, I've always thought of it as my building because we've managed it for so long and own this portion of the building, but it's a, it's a company that I'm the president of, so I've just generally thought of myself as acting as, quote, the owner. But there's an accountant in Toronto, Mr. Perry Smith. There's a retired couple in North York, Ron and Shirley Panzer. And there's another couple in Mississauga that owned the building along with me.
That's great, appreciate it. Mr. Mills, and through your worship to staff, I hope we could be a little more complete in the future of our applications.
Thank you. Councilor Maves?
Yes, your worship, my question is concerning, I believe a few months ago, we did a settlement on Dorchester, the old park, it was a five, it was a five percent development charge. Are we going to be running this every time we turn around? And I don't know, this question for a possible, Mr. Darberson?
Mr. Darberson?
I mean, what we were proposing, staff negotiate with these people selling these, I'd like to direction as to what's going to happen if they...
Yes, appendix, appendix draft additions, I guess, number eight. Mr. Darberson?
Yes, this, there's a standard condition of five percent park dedication. This, this building was not, did not collect park dedication fees in the past, and therefore that is the standard condition.
Okay. Any other questions from members of council? Yes, Councilor Ring?
I think just if we could get it confirmed that there will be no changes to the, for the existing tenants. If you're there now, you're not going to be evicted. There will be no extra fees, that, no condo fees for them, that utilities will still be included in the rent. In other words, they can continue on, no change. I think they just need to hear that. Perhaps our staff can confirm that, how this works when the tenant's got a condo.
Sure. Staff, Mr. Mills, did you make a comment with regard to that? Do you want to address that again?
Well, actually, the reason that there are so few written leases anymore is that the Landlord and Tenant Act's so extremely specific. Yeah. You can't, there's nothing you can do. I mean, it's all, the tenant has rights under the Landlord and Tenant Act to occupy their unit perpetually. You as a landlord cannot evict the tenant unless they're not paying rent or are, you know, drug traffickers or are driving the other tenants crazy with noise. But other than that, they have full rights of tenancy, and you can't evict them for any other reason. And the amount of rent that we're allowed to charge is also governed by the act. Last year's increase, I think there's something like two point three percent. The rent is defined under the act, so if you already have, and this is in a pertinent point in terms of extras and so on, but our rented foods, hydro, gas, water, all the other services, you're not allowed as a landlord to suddenly take those services out of the rent and charge for them additionally. So whatever the charges are, they're all in one bundle and they're all governed by the Landlord and Tenant Act. So they're pretty safe in that respect.
Councilor Ring, does that satisfy your inquiry? Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mills? Having seen none, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of condominium is now concluded. The pleasure of council. condominium is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Second by Councilor Fisher. Before your discussion to the motion, having seen none others in favor, motions carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
From the council, I'd like to begin this evening by offering my condolences to Regional Councilor Norma Pollak and his family on the passing of Norma's mother-in-law, Mrs. Mary Capomilio. Also to John, to Wayne, relative of City Falls, Niagara Falls Fire Department, and the passing of Mr. John Pivarnik. To Doris Sacco of our Parks and Recreation Culture Department, and her family, and her family on the passing of her father, Mr. Fred Sacco. And earlier about the passing of Mr. John Denon, the long-established city solicitor. We offer our thoughts and sincere sympathy on behalf of the members of council and the city staff during this period of time to those families affected. Moving on to other council business, I'd like to report on the Two Casino Committee initiative of our Business Development Office, formed to make every effort to keep both casinos open. Has not had any official confirmation yet from provincial government of their plans to keep both casinos open. Despite the ongoing discussions with the LGC, we've had tremendous support from a number of parliament, Mr. Kim Crater, who sits on the committee and has been very involved in these discussions. And though it has been reported in the media, but the negotiations are positive, the committee feels that with no official commitment, a campaign to keep both casinos open and save more than 1,500 jobs in Niagara was necessary. As of right now, our website is online, www/saveniagarajobs.ca. It was launched late Friday afternoon and already includes hundreds of names in favor of keeping both casinos in Niagara Falls open. And we'll keep you up to date on further development and we will continue to make saving these jobs in our city a priority for the people of Niagara Falls. Yes, would you hold, please? I'll just finish my comments. There have been some significant events that have recently, that we are very proud of taking place in our community. As you're well aware, Cirque du Soleil has been winding down the performances for the year. It was a great honor to be able to pay tribute to the Cantamira family circus dynasty this weekend. On behalf of members of council, I made a presentation to the family for 100 years of providing world-class entertainment. We are proud to have them perform here in our city at Cirque Niagara for the past two years. The opening workshop service for our Turn to Pray, I'm sorry, the opening worship service for our Turn to Pray in Niagara Falls took place last evening at Mountain Park Church. It was a great experience to be with such a large congregation made up of people from all over our community who have dedicated this week to offering prayers for our city. I look forward to joining other worship sessions throughout the week. All are welcome to attend services that will be held at City Hall each evening from 7:00 to 8:30, tonight through to Saturday evening, with the exception of Sunday's closing service, which will be held at Kingston College in Upper Circle. I'd also like to bring some events of note to the attention of the residents of members of council. We're certainly pleased to host the, to be the host city for the Canadian Association of Fire Chiefs Annual Conference. It's their 99th conference being held in Niagara this week. It was a pleasure to greet more than 300 fire chiefs and chiefs from across Canada at the opening ceremony and the memorial service that they held yesterday. I trust they will have a successful convention as they deal with the issues of importance to our communities like Canada's building codes and controls on grow-up operations. Once again, best wishes to our own fire department as they host this week's event. Upcoming events, the Cadillac Savings and Credit Union sponsoring their fifth annual pink ribbon deckers on Friday, September 28th at the Cairncrop at 7:00 a.m. Tickets are available at the rise of the contact Cadillac Savings and Credit Union for details. Sanford Presbyterian Church on St. Paul will be holding their pumpkin festival on Saturday, September 29th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The festival is open to the public, in a pumpkin pie baking contest, which I'm sure will be a highlight. Also, I'd like to note, if I may, many years of service, this is the last meeting that our director of planning will be attending officially as our director of planning, and Mr. Doug Iverson is retiring. There's going to be a retirement dinner for him on Thursday evening. Doug, would like to, on behalf of the corporation and if I may, our members of council, thank you for your contribution to our city's planning development in the last number of years. I'm guessing, is it over 30?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. So we're very pleased, certainly a substantial tenure. Doug, we wish you many years of happiness in your retirement and thank you for your dedication to the city and your job in the past 27 years. On behalf of members of council, we could show our support, because I appreciate it. And members of council as well, maybe advise that just outside the chamber, Mr. Kevin Windsor of the Lonnie's Lane Museum has a display case that they're completing, which will include souvenirs from the years 1824 to the year 2000, including, if you can imagine, a dress from the early 1890s. So we thank Kevin and Lonnie's Lane Museum for the display. It's very impressive and we're very happy that they've taken the time. You're saying it's all in, Councilor Fisher, yes? Okay, thank you very much, members of council. Yes, Councilor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for raising the Save Niagara Jobs.ca. I was going to raise it under new business. I'm glad to see you, but I'll go under your comments. I have a problem with this article. And I have a problem because Friday, we received an email from Mr. McDonald asking us to sign to all users in the Save Niagara Falls group, asking us to sign to savemagadrops.ca. And I called him and I said, I have a problem with this direction. I have a problem because it seems to me we're wading into what is a provincial election debate issue. And he said, nope. He said, you know, the committee thinks this is the action we have to take. As he and I were talking, I signed the petition while we were speaking. And he talked to me about the committee and the committee thought this was the direction to go, yada, da, yada, da, yada. Never once through our conversation did he explain to me that the site has been administered by the proponents of the deal and the people who are looking to broker the deal with the casino. And to me, that would have changed how I addressed my perception of this savemagadrops.ca. I don't think it's our job to negotiate for Canadian Niagara Hotels, their lease agreement with the province. And clearly, as I read this and the calls I got today and the number of people concerned that that's where we were going, that was my first concern when he emailed it to us. As I read through Corey's article and I get to the last paragraph and I'm quoting you, it says, "We have heard rumblings of their desire to close Casino Niagara." And then it goes on to explain things. And it says, "We've had a lot of indications they are not interested in keeping Casino Niagara open as a viable operation." And I guess I would say to you, I went back over the weekend and pulled out all my letters from MPP Crater over the last three years, talking about that the direction the province was going to keep Casino Niagara open. Do we have anything from the province stating their rumblings, I read on Canadian Niagara Hotels rumblings that the deal hasn't been signed? Do we have anything in writing from the province telling us they're going to close Casino Niagara?
No, in fact, I addressed a number of issues and I appreciate you bringing further. So if you'd like to be seated, but...
No, because I have a couple more, but I'll give you a whole list of them and you might as well address them all at once. My understanding when I read the announcement coming from MPP Crater before, a couple weeks ago, was that the province has agreed they're going to keep Casino Niagara open. When I spoke to him on the weekend in regards to the savemagadrops.ca, he clearly explained, as he explained to a number of us who spoke this weekend, he spoke to this weekend, that the province has agreed to keep Casino Niagara open. Now, as in any real estate agreement, the negotiations in regards to dollar figures are going back and forth. I spoke to him today at 3:30, he told me the exact same thing. The dollar figures are going back and forth. Why are we involved in helping Casino Niagara negotiate a deal, but we don't know what the deal is? But I'd say, I don't care whether it's Mr. Maves or Mr. Crater negotiating for us after October 10th. We criticize the previous government for signing a deal that none of us were privy on. We've criticized that 100 times in this council table.
Counselor, now, everybody, second, I'm going to correct you and stop you at this point.
Sure.
Your information is incorrect.
No, sir.
Your information is incorrect.
No.
If you attended the meetings, we are not negotiating a lease on anyone's behalf.
You are.
That was made, excuse me, that was made very clear.
To you.
The committee, we have committee members here. When we spoke to the government, we said, first of all, we're not here to solicit on behalf of any particular landlord. We're not privy to the terms contained in the lease therein, nor are we negotiating the lease terms herein or therein. That was made very clear on a number of occasions.
So do you?
It was made clear to the press, it was made clear to the member, it was clear, in fact, Kim Crater has been on our committee and he's well aware of that. So if you can check with Mr. Crater, we're not here to negotiate the terms of the lease. Mr. McDonald, Mr. Valasetti, Councilor Carrillo, all sit on the committee. We're not there negotiating on anybody's behalf. We've made that point several times. We're not there negotiating a private business between a landlord and a tenant. That's not our concern. We're preserving jobs. So your information, your assumptions are incorrect. The basis of the committee was formed by the two BIAs, the Meloni, by being the Clifton Hill and Centre of BIAs. It's being funded by them. We're not there to advocate on behalf of the landlord. If you're reading something into that article, that is not correct. There may be assumptions made or whatever. It was made clear to the reporter that we are not there to negotiate the lease on behalf of a private developer. So make that point straight. Mr. McDonald?
No, you're making that point straight to me now. You weren't on the telephone with MPP Crater and my staff today. A number of times.
Yes, I've been speaking to Mr. Crater a lot lately.
Okay, wait, so you're telling me that he didn't clearly explain to me that the only thing left to finish negotiating is the price of the lease agreement between Canadian Niagara Hotels and the government? Because that's all the slack.
And we're not, we're not privy to those terms.
But you should be privy to those terms. The prior government said you weren't allowed to be privy to those terms either.
We're not privy to those terms.
But...
Now, we ask them to be.
Yes, you are.
Please make your point and we'll answer your question.
No, I'm making my point. You have put us out as, when you pull up that savemagadrops.ca and it says about us, it says Mayor Ted Selsey and members of council. I went back, I tried to find a motion in this council to create a website to help Canadian Niagara Hotels negotiate a better lease agreement. You got called saying people who thinking we were doing exactly that because they called a number of us. The perception to the residents here is there's an agreement already, Kim Crater's already told us that there's an agreement, that all is left going back and forth between the two principles is price. I would expect any government to get the best price possible for a lease negotiation. I think this savemagadrops.ca is just being entered into now because we're entering into a political election, a provincial election. We can read the article to know that you've turned it into a political, oh, yes, you have, a provincial political election. I think it amazes me beyond belief that we didn't let the process work itself out. To me, the timing is very suspect. And if according to Mr. Crater, his facts are clear, all of Jim is now negotiating price, why are we putting the pressure to sign a deal that you're not privy to, you just said so yourself, two weeks before an election? Tell me that isn't leverage for Mr. D'Seanzo. I mean, perception is everything, Mr. Mayor. Do you have to chastise me to tell me I'm wrong? Everybody called us today.
Please be seated if you're finished.
Please.
While you're here, the facts of the committee, committee has been struck. Councilor Carrillo, do you want to make a comment, please, with respect to this?
Thank you, your worship. From my perspective, my participation in the committee has been just one issue, to have two casinos in that area and that area of view. My focus on the committee, as many of the others, has been just to have two casinos. Even during, I mean, we didn't even talk about D'Seanzo. We've been really asking the government to maintain two casinos. We didn't say that it had to be with D'Seanzo's. We just asked for there to be another casino, a casino in Victoria Center, a Victoria Center, Clifton Hill. Our thrust has always been just to maintain two casinos. My thrust on the committee, as others have been beginning, have never been to ask the casino to sign a deal with the D'Seanzos. It's just to make sure that we maintain that casino. It may be there, it might be somewhere else in that area. We did ask the government to sign the deal. They might, might not be sufficient. They might put it somewhere else. We have never said to them to sign the deal with the D'Seanzo's. We've only asked that they maintain the status of that other casino and keep those jobs in that area. But from my perspective, that's all I've...
That's correct. And to confirm further, if I may, members of council, this process began some 20 months ago, under the direction of council, of course, the endorsement of council. Please, please give me the courtesy of listening. This began 20 months ago. This council has endorsed the two casino proposal. We have the region making it a prime request at Niagara Days last May. We had involvement of regional chair, Cardington, a week ago Friday at our meeting. Councilor, I'm sorry, MPP Kim Crater has been in constant attendance, been doing an excellent job on our behalf. This is a nonpartisan effort. This matter has come forward now to the final weeks of what we understand is a provincial election. We have never asked for an endorsement of a lease or arrangement with the proponent, who's the landlord. We have asked for two casinos. Now, we have a matter before us that the landlord and tenant are negotiating before themselves, I guess, in respect of the selection taking place. We want a commitment from this government as they propose to us. We have our MPP on side supporting us. We have no official word. We had confirmation from the LG that they were looking at closing the casino, contrary to what you heard. We've had it made by the minister. When we attended the minister's office, we were told that the former CAO was our biggest obstacle because he wanted to close Casino Niagara. We've asked for two casinos. We're making the points clear, you're hearing it directly from me, counselor, that we have never, ever advocated on behalf of the landlord and the lease. We've never touched a lease agreement and we've never seen a lease agreement. It's not, we're not privy to that. We're looking at a two casino issue. This matter is being funded by the private sector. The matter is being dealt with and paid for. We have a consultant lobbyist who we've been taking direction from. There'll be a stepped up campaign at the request of the committee. The committee met last Friday and decided to launch the website. It was their decision to do so and they did so. And in attendance, we had a number of staff people, including our CAO and our director of Business Development, along with other members of the committee. So those are the facts. What you read in the paper is not always the full information, so I would caution you on your suggestion. I had one phone call today from an individual who was talking about unions, had nothing to do with what we were doing. So we are not lobbying on behalf of the private sector. We're not interfering with a private lease agreement. That's very clear and we've never gone there. In fact, MPP Kim Crater has most recently been most appreciative of my effort in not making it partisan, being totally respectful, not getting involved with the government's negotiation on the lease, and said he really appreciated the way we've handled this. CAO would like to make a comment.
Just a couple of comments, your worship. What the committee's focus has been, as Councilor Carrillo says, is around the second casino. And what the committee was really looking for, not to have a deal signed and not even certainly, there's tensions to discuss a deal, but what we were looking for was an announcement from the province that they were committed to two casinos in the local announcement, public announcement. I think so, a week and a half ago, or maybe a week ago, a week and a half ago, there was no negotiation. There was no paper back and forth. There was absolutely nothing back and forth. And we believe it was because of the efforts of the committee that in fact, our first piece of paper went, we understand, to the landlord to really get negotiations in happening. That aside, what we were looking for was a commitment from the province to make a public announcement before the election to say, we're committed to two casinos, conditional upon working out whatever deal we're looking out for. We didn't discuss those kinds of things. MPP Crater was at our meeting on Friday and knew exactly what was going on. He acknowledged in fact also that there was no verbal commitment, no public commitment to the second casino. Even though, as pointed out, the province has never come inside when they're not in deep to casinos, the committee felt that we needed to say that there will be two casinos. Mr. Crater was also very much aware that the website was going to be launched on Friday and he had absolutely no problem with that at all. In fact, he notified the province himself, not 30 minutes before it was placed, that it was about to happen and he was involved. Today, I think what caused some confusion is the newspaper article, which stated that the website was being, was owned by, registered in the name of Canadian Niagara Hotels. And to be honest, that was a shock to me and probably to most people on the committee. And just to explain that a little bit, this has been going on for months and months and the talk came about setting up the website. There were very technical people involved in that discussion, wasn't, almost the committee wasn't. And there was an offer made by one of the staff at Canadian Niagara Hotels, all put a reserve on that website and we'll deal with it later. But there's a company actually called, I think it's called 180, who in fact is taking care of the website and is hosting the survey. The intent was from the beginning that they in fact would own this website and they would control it. And I think it was just an oversight. And to be honest, when the solid paper today was brought to our attention, we immediately dealt with that. And if it's not done now, if by tomorrow, it will be in the name of the company 180, which was the intent from the beginning, it was never the intent. I don't believe probably anyone in the committee realized it was registered in Canadian Niagara Hotels' name. But they put it on reserve so it could be switched to this company at appropriate time. So that's probably today what caused some confusion and might lead some to believe that this committee is being driven by the property owner. And that has not been the case during these discussions. And as mentioned, we kept everybody informed by it, but we felt it was critical because the nature of this is to get a commitment from the province. And as we all know, not just this council, but the region and everybody we've spoken to have been driven by that one objective. And it was even suggested in some of the discussions recently, about the province may want to go to a different location. And our fault is, we don't care as long as it's our fault. And that's what our fault has been from day to day.[1792.22] So I, I was disappointed with the phone call today, where the focus on, on the call was around this issue of the registration of the website. And the point I made was that that was a technical issue, that really someone dropped the ball on it. But this is not about that. This is about fifteen hundred jobs and about an effort on behalf of the city and this is development, keep fifteen hundred jobs here. And that's the only thing that this has involved as far as the city's involvement has been.
Thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Carrion.
Your Worship, in fairness to the discussion, the only place where we may have been was informing the council. We were going to put the mayor and council on the website, but maybe should have had the discussion with council before we did that.
In fact, they used my name, I had no problem with that. But we are, we're not hosting it, it's being hosted by 180.
I think it says mayor, I think it says mayor and council.
It just refers to, I see, I think the website, and I, I looked at that today, that's correct.
That probably was an oversight. Like I said, we've all been working very hard on the committee.
Sure.
And that probably was an oversight.
And Commissioner Carrion, as our CAO said, that we were unaware that where it was registered from and had no, no reason to address that. Commissioner Iainoni.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear the CAO say he was shocked to hear that it was registered in Canadian Niagara Hotels, because that was a shock to me too.
It was a shock to me as well.
And I signed it, I signed it thinking we were administering that it was a drive from the city. And I'm glad to see that you can understand the perception people may have that we are driving a lease agreement between Casino Niagara. I guess what my, my concern here is, it does look partisan. Whether you say it doesn't or not, at this point, the calls that I received today, I believed it looked partisan myself. And, and I'm glad to hear you say you had the shock and the disbelief too. Because to me, it looked like we were crea, and I, my concern to you Friday, my first thing to you was, is this going to make us appear partisan? And is this going to put us within a provincial election debate? Before I even signed the petition and knew who was administering it, I guess my question is, who owns 180 and who hired 180? Because before we get shocked again, maybe we should need to know who the principles of this are.
Yeah, I, I can't name the principles, Your Worship, but 180 is a private company and, and they're hired by the committee. And the funding for the committee for this has been from the VIAs of Clifton and Victoria.
Okay, thank you. And I want to say something else. I keep hearing you say "before the election", "before the election". And is, and anything, an election is actually, is sometimes a catalyst used for leverage. But I don't want to see a province enter into an agreement, regardless who the government of the day is, forced to enter into an agreement to keep us happy when they know, I believe they're going to keep the two casinos open. We've driven that issue for this entire term. We have letter after letter from MPP Crater telling us we have no intentions to close it. We don't have anything in writing telling us they're going to close it, other than, if I quote the paper, rumblings. I don't want leverage used before, two weeks before an election, to have them sign a deal that isn't in the best interest of the community, or has them sign a deal that they're forced to sign to keep people electorally happy. That bothers me. And I think that's where it appears that partisanship and, and the provincial election has become an issue today in regards to the article. And that was my concern to you before anybody even called us. I wasn't aware that "about us" included mayor, members of council, till the media called me last night either. I said, "I don't know what you're talking about, I didn't know this, you know", other than getting an email from our CAO. Keeping us in the loop is probably a pretty good idea. Because when I say, "I'm sorry, I don't know what you're talking about", not only do I feel stupid, I feel really left out of the loop of this team. And talking to people, talking to other council members today, none of us had a clue, other than I thought we were, we were signing something city-driven, not private development-driven as appeared today. So we can get into any partisan debate or your politics, my politics, you want. To me, perception was everything, and that was the perception I got out of the paper today.
Well, that may be your perception, but that wasn't the intention. And the CAO can address that. We notified council, we had a meeting here at noon, thereabouts, on Friday, and the, it was decided by the committee that the website would go live. The CAO sent out a email immediately as soon as that happens, is that correct?
Yes, Your Worship. But our feeling was, I mean, we've been very open about our interest in this as a community. And we think it's a top priority, and, and I was comfortable to invite those people on our website, our own staff, to support it as a city initiative. We've made a contact with the Chamber of Commerce, Niagara Falls Tourism, and asked them to do the same thing, to contact their members to encourage them to go to the website. And we also were told that the members of the VIAs would be doing the same, contact their employees to make this point. And while we certainly don't want to be partisan, and certainly, in any issue, from the staff coming through, we, we did recognize the election is coming, and we did think it might have been an option for our community to put some pressure here to, to make a commitment. We just want a commitment to those two casinos, for, for all the reasons. And while the province has not come out and said, you know, we're not going to have two casinos, we all know there have been all kinds of actions taken to diminish the impact of Casino Niagara. Everything from marketing, to reducing buses, to reducing shuttles, to cutting back on, on, on the D and generally, not necessarily. And so we can only draw a conclusion, right? We know that FMC does not want to have two casinos, they prefer one casino, because they would make more money. The community would lose fifteen hundred jobs, but FMC would probably do better financially. So with all of those actions taking place, and in the absence of a agreement from the province, the committee was driven to try to get announcements. That's all we wanted, announcements, we're committed to two casinos. And we assumed all along it would be conditional upon appropriations to make. And unfortunately, here we are today. And it's unfortunate that we're getting turned a little bit because of the newspaper and the information, which was correct. It was just unfortunate that's not the intent of us, and we really dropped it off in terms of that one issue, so.
Commissioner Thompson.
Just for clarification, 180 Marketing is a changed new firm out of St. Catharines. They are also the marketing hand for Niagara Falls Tourism and are very active in the community and independent from certainly anybody else involved in the, in the casino issue. I, I think it's personally, aside from the lease, getting involved in that, it's a great time to get decisions made politically. And the more pressure that can be put on both candidates, all candidates, to have a satisfactory solution, in my opinion, this is the time to do it. In fact, that's when we did it before. We had Mr. Reeves and Mr. Mays and Mr. Crater rushing to make announcements as a result of the election coming on. And that's how we got Mr. Reeves to make the announcement about two casinos before us. Aside from the lease aspect of it, I know you can't get involved in that, but great time to make decisions. And in fact, I'm sorry that we, I'll make some comments on this later, why we didn't have a report to this council at this meeting with downloading factors that we could put to the candidates to get their response before the actual election comes on board. That's what I wanted to have, to see what they have to say and to make it public, what these people are doing to try to rectify some of the problems we have today as a result of downloading.
Mr. Fisher.
Just with regard to that point, Commissioner Thompson did make a motion about a month ago on that. The questions have been done, they have been sent to the candidates, and I expect to get answers shortly.
We should have a copy of it.
You will be getting a copy of the questions. Once a month, you get a council information package, it'll be included in your next council information package.
I wanted to know before, at least what the questions were before. Could you please send us a copy so we can have a look at it?
You're probably going to get it this week.
Commissioner Iainoni.
Sorry, one more point. When I was talking to MPP Crater today, he said, you know, well, with his participation in the committee, he said, "The committee is very aware that", when he made his presentation and his pitch to the province in order to fund the thirty-five million dollars for the convention center, it was based on the fact that we have two casinos. And he said, "The province approved that thirty-five million dollars based on the fact that we have two casinos, not because we were going to close one." So I just want to make sure that we know that they're, they're behind us. We don't have anything threatening to close it. We have the 2008. If I'm not mistaken here, it says, the lease expires 2010, the option has to be exercised by 2008. And I'd like to see the process work its way through. But that's how we got thirty-five million dollars for the convention center, based on the province's belief that we have two casinos. So, you know, I think that's a positive step forward also.
And to that point, we said to the, to the government that it would be inconsistent to close the casino, having been given the commitment to build the convention center by the province as well. And that's the very point that we're making. And you know, ironically, ladies and gentlemen, members of council, I made this point several times to the press, and I've been thanked profusely by our MPP, who's been very involved with us, for not making this a partisan effort. This is not, and nor has it ever been, a partisan effort. I have had no discussions with any members of the opposition. Mr. Crater has done his job, has been sitting on our committee, and has been performing well. He's had a problem dealing with his own government getting a commitment from them in writing. And that's what we're asking for. Okay? So we made the record straight. Thank you. We'll go on to next communication, please.
Do you have anything, Mr. Thompson?
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. Before we move on, I would like a letter of condolence sent to Pat and Rosa Simons, their sister-in-law Sally. Simons has passed away.
Thank you very much. But moving on to communications and comments of the city clerk, we have a request, the Canadian Cancer Society requesting October be proclaimed as best cancer awareness month. Moving to Commissioner Fisher, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Request by the Niagara Falls Public Library requesting October be proclaimed as library month in Niagara Falls, moved by Commissioner Fisher, seconded by Commissioner Mays. You've heard the motion, any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. We have a request from QP Ontario, the Ontario Coalition for Better Child Care, for October 24th, be proclaimed as childcare worker, and here we childhood educator appreciation day, moved by Commissioner Thompson, seconded by Commissioner Fisher. You've heard the motion. Any, any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Thank you. We have requests for fire prevention week, October 7th to 13th, be proclaimed, and be proclaimed as fire service recognition day, that would be October 13th itself, for the approval of council, moved by Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Peter Angelo, seconded by Commissioner Diadati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Item number eight, we have Guy Fawkes Day, request the use of pyrotechnic fireworks to spray at bonfire night at 7857 B. W. Adams Road on November 5th to November 8th, with consideration council, moved by Commissioner Thompson, seconded by Commissioner Carrion. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Motion's passed. Chemical spraying of private property. We have a request by Laurie De Cenzo for a bylaw prohibiting chemical spraying on private properties and recommendations to refer this to staff and personnel in the city committee. Full recommendation by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Iainoni. You've heard the motion, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, any additional items for council's consideration? Thank you. We have reports, ratification of community service, community actions. Commissioner Iainoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of community services. The minutes of September 10th, 2007 meeting be approved as amended. Reports MW 2007-115, request to upgrade road allowance Willoughby Drive-Morningstar. Let staff be directed to prepare the development agreement between the city and Mr. Nick Romanano for the upgrading proportion of Willoughby Drive and Morningstar Road. MW 2007-117, Montrose Road closures to receive and file for information purposes, and let staff prepare a report on a request to reduce taxes at 8841 Montrose Road, did the road closure. R2007-26, Highway 420 and Stanley Avenue, the raised highway median appearance design options expanded. That a reservation be sent to the provincial government thanking them for their offer, but the city's budgetary restraints prohibit the city from accepting, and that the city respectfully requests that the province maintain the roadway to an appropriate level befitting a gateway. Under new business, that Mr. Pindus offered help from the cost to refurbish the former huts, wreck and culture building, be referred to staff with a report back to council detailing the maintenance cost and, and use of the historic building, and that former huts and recreation and culture building not be demolished in the interim. That staff prepare a report to council on the placement of cultural service boxes of city property be provided, and that staff prepare a report on the billboard signed facing the QW at Stanley Avenue addressing the compliance with the signed bylaw. That staff revise the policy on project notification and include council in the circulation of notices to residents and businesses prior to the project commencement or assembly.
Moved by Commissioner Iainoni, seconded by Commissioner Peter Angelo. Any discussion? Prove to that. I don't know, having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Call for ratification of public services committee actions. Commissioner Peter Angelo is chair.
Thank you, Your Worship. First of all, was the approval that the minutes of the July 23rd, 2007 meeting be adopted and recorded. There was three reports tonight. First one was F200733 dealing with our financial policies. It's recommended that the financial policies be adopted as presented. Second report was CPS 200703 dealing with the water and sewer rates review. And we have deferred that, Your Worship, to the next scheduled meeting, which is in three weeks, Your Worship. And the last report, Your Worship, was F200736 dealing with the 2008 budget. And what we did tonight was we approved the 2008 budget schedule. And I would say moving on.
Moved by Commissioner Peter Angelo, seconded by Commissioner Diadati. You've heard the motion, any thought and comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. I'd like to call on our clerk for ratification and camera actions.
Your Worship, the recommendation is actually related to the sale of lands bylaw that's listed later in the agenda. And under that sale of lands bylaw, we ask if anybody in the gallery is wishing to speak. And I do see Mrs. Wright here, who has an interest, I know, in this matter. So I would suggest that we let her speak at this time and then deal with that recommendation subsequently.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Wright, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, sir. Good night you guys have had. You want to get out and stretch, get the blood circulating again? Oh my gosh, please stay awake for ten minutes, okay? I just got to speak to you here. All right. I'm speaking to, as Mr. Peter said, the property, or the proposal to the sale of public lands. Your Worship, members of council, I would say first that I'm surprised about having to be here tonight on the motion to put forward a bylaw this evening with regards to the sale of land, part of Grassy Brook in Poland. I think everybody's surprised that I'm surprised. This is the reason why. I'm not surprised that the Grand Niagara has made the follow-up request, nor that the city clerk has placed it on your agenda, but with the fact that it has occurred when the requirements put forth by this council have yet to be fulfilled. I have been informed by city staff that they're not certain how much more public consultation has to occur on this matter. Members of council, Your Worship, there's been no consult on the sale of the land, other than at the meeting, the motion was to move to a public consultation with regards to the sale. All the previous meetings were with regard to the closure, or rather, the loss of access to Grassy Brook Road by the current taxpayers of Niagara Falls. I have yet, or other taxpaying residents of Niagara Falls, to be invited to a public consultation for the sale of this land. I did note a council meeting with regards to this matter here in council chamber. I don't believe this council's a public consultation, but I stand to be corrected. So what about these consultations that should have occurred, or phantom consultations in regard to the sale of the land? Were the pros and cons and the impact to the taxpayers of Niagara Falls present in future, let alone the residents of Grassy Brook community reviewed? What of the consults between Grand Niagara and the residents with the access being permitted through the use of pedestrian and bike trails? There was talk that this would form part of the consults, or again, was it just talk? However, this is my neighborhood, and this is a big topic of discussion amongst the residents of the Grassy Brook community. What of Morris Road and its condition to width, weight bearing? It was to form part of the consultation with regards to the sale of public lands? What about the proposed 250 to 300 new taxpayers who get to use the road? What makes them different from me, who's also a taxpayer of Niagara Falls? And, Your Worship, as you're aware, we're speaking of yards. I'll be able to say hi to them in the morning when I'm walking, and they drive their car on that road, but I can't. And what of the final site plan document? At the last council meeting I attended, where they circulated the site plan, I was aware that there were many outstanding requirements. I know egress was a huge part, because there's only one access point into this proposed neighborhood. Have these been resolved? Why do I ask all of these questions? Because there's been no construction, no survey crew, no utilities being mapped out, no streets set up with markers. And this brings me to the most obvious and greatest requirement not being fulfilled. And this brings me to the most obvious and greatest requirement not being fulfilled. The Grand Niagara was not to return to council on this matter, that is, cordially for the roads, let alone the sale of public lands, until a substantial or significant portion of the development was to have been constructed. And this was not to include the current golf course. Nothing is there. Zero. There's grass, field and soil. All right? So zero percent of the work on the development in terms of construction, there's no work, preliminary work on streets, no sewers, no water mains, other than municipal work being done. What there is are torn-up roads and presumptive signage of Crowland Road already being a private drive. Those signs are already up. And the signs that the road has no exit, those signs are already up. All right? But your comment and your motion that significant or substantial development was required before you went to this step isn't working. There's nothing there except grass and soil. This council informed Grand Niagara that a substantial portion of the construction was to be in place before they asked for permanent closure of the road, let alone have the city declare the land in question surplus and place up for sale. Until that time, then the road was to remain accessible to all taxpayers of Niagara Falls, not just Grassy Brook residents, all taxpayers, including the members of council and, Your Worship. Now, in my opinion, this is a slap in the face of council's decision and position, as well as to all of the taxpayers of Niagara Falls, who are held to abide by council decisions. This request, that is, the sale of the lands in question, is very premature, in my humble opinion, in light that no construction has occurred, that the public has not been made aware if all of the outstanding site plan requirements have been met, of which no construction can go forward until the site plan is approved. Further, there's always the question if the complex in question will proceed with the current economic atmosphere. And if it does not proceed as planned, even in an amended fashion, there will have been the sale of roads for absolutely no reason. For a moment, let me digress on the sale of public lands. Will this be a public sale by closed tender? Or the other option is to have the sale to the owners that front each side of the land in question. In the event of the latter, Crowland Road will thus be turned over to the Grand Niagara, as it owns both sides of Crowland. But what of Grassy Brook Road? Has anyone informed the federal government that they are gaining their half of the road section currently known as Grassy Brook? Perhaps the Grassy Brook Road community should be contacting our federal counterparts with regards to 50% of the road that fronts the river, which is technically crown land. Now, back to the declaring of surplus lands prematurely. It's good that we live in a democratic society. On three occasions, the council of Niagara Falls, in majority votes, determined that access to Grassy Brook Road would remain in place for all the taxpayers of Niagara Falls. For an unknown reason or reason, certain council members opted to change their position with the Grand Niagara's persistent requests of council. They have the right to do this. And council members have the right to change their mind with more facts. As a taxpayer of this city, I also have the right to be as persistent that decisions made by this council are upheld and de-processed followed, so that we, the taxpayers of Niagara Falls, are all treated in an equitable manner. My recommendation, recommendation in a humble manner, is to defer this motion, that is, the sale of this property, of surplus lands, until at least such time as a significant portion of the construction is completed. And that the portion of Grassy Brook Road, if it's not sold by public tender, revert to both the neighboring landowners, that is, Grand Niagara and the federal government. And then we'll just talk to the federal government, see if we can get our bike path or our walkway. That consult, that consult, as they were to occur, do take place before the land goes up for sale. And lastly, if council cannot follow through with their motion of the construction minimums, that they so table a motion that should this development not go through for any reasons as planned. And if you do go ahead with the sale of the land, that the land in question revert back to the city of Niagara Falls and the taxpayers, as it so rightly deserves to be. Oh, and through you, Your Worship, through to the engineer, thank you for the bit of information that when road is damaged due to construction, we can seek remedial costs, because Grassy Brook was damaged by sod drops to a great extent when they were doing the Grassy Brook Grand River. So thank you for that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. I want to ask Mr. Beaman, they call me, before we have questions from members of council, if you'd be kind of hold your questions. Mr. Beaman, you might want to elaborate on some issues that were brought forward.
Actually, I prefer to answer questions rather than just kind of a comment. But in general, there's an expectation here that is not carried in the end of the written record, that I have that proof, that I have seen. The only reason why public notice of this meeting was sent at home was because I was asked to ensure that the procedures here had been followed. Looking back through the record, it would seem to me that the notice in this particular case might well have been redundant from a legal standpoint. However, nonetheless, there's nothing the matter with notifying more than us. On October 30th, 2006, this council closed that road permanently. It is gone as a road. It is now just city-owned land. If the city wants people to walk on it, they can do that. The key thing in the expectations here is there's some notion that construction would be taking place without these roads. It can't. These guys won't be able to get a building permit unless we convey this land to them because of the way the thing is set up. So, and that is the expectation that the council has created. This matter's been going on since 2001, I see, looking through the record here. But it has to come upon, if the city is to have any credibility as a development regulating entity, well, it commits to something. There's numerous public meetings on this matter. And I would suggest to the council that, at this point, the only way you can really, all we're doing is ratifying the agreement, the terms on which we're selling the land. We've already agreed to sell it. So I think that it would be, certainly, I would not want to be defending the case, while I can't give you a legal advice in public, I would not want to be defending the case, if we were to turn this down at the last minute. The notion of having these buyback things, I've been there, I do not recommend them. You end up, you can't predict the state you're going to get yourself into when you're, and you have people urging you to use that power, but the project that's half finished can't be finished without, without the road. I don't see as well why, or we're still working as, do we have to set us to the seven reason agreement on this thing? Because we're going to put trails through, couldn't we?
Mr. Beaman?
It's under appeal. But so if things aren't fine, so we could set trails and that sort of thing. So I believe that the, that this lady's interests, which are legitimate interests in terms of securing some public interests through this land can be fulfilled during the process of development. You don't necessarily have to have roads to do that. So I would suggest the council stay on the course, if you're already on, and have been for some time, or a long period of time in consideration, and proceed with the sale. That's my perspective on it.
Mr. Beaman, as well, would you like to confirm that the council has followed the new process?
Oh, yes, certainly. The amount of public notice, as far as the sale of land, this council has well exceeded any expectation of notice that's required by any of the legislation for this approach sale of land. I can't comment on the planning process, because I'm not privy to all of that. The sale of land itself has been lots of notice and public consultation on that. Indeed, more so than just the number of person that may have been involved.
And Mrs. Wright presented the idea that we had a policy with respect to hovering lands to adjoining neighbors with respect to crown lands or...
Well, the priority of the notified about this, and I can't dig through the file, dig the red up right now, but they're going to be notified, is just part of the regular circulation. There is a, the rules in Ontario, for some years, they are not the rules now, but the rules at one time, up until, I think, 2001, 2001, really, when you closed a public road, you had to offer down, you had to divide it down the road and offer to neighboring property owners. That was the rule up until 2001. Now, you don't have to do that. And quite frequently, the, it just, you know, softened, and we've seen the problems with closing lanes, just here in the city. It's often difficult, because a lot of people don't want it, so they don't want the land. And then what do you do? So it's, it's an evolved policy, and that's, it has been a policy, there's no longer a policy or legal requirement.
Okay, I think Mrs. Wright, we addressed your questions.
Can I buy the land? Is it up for public?
And Mrs. Wright buy the land, Mr. Beaman?
No. Well, that's not the, the way this land is sold, and I'm certain even the policies of the council were not putting it up for public tender. And that's, that's from the direction council had determined, that it was in the public interest to support this development. And as part of the support in that development, agreed to convey, agreed to close roads and convey them to the developer.
Could you explain the process the council took then, please, with respect to the valuation of the land and the...
Yes, all the lands are evaluated by an appraiser, who's retained by the city. We then insist that the developer can meet that price. And the appraiser takes instruction from the legal department of the city.
Okay. They need to change their address then to bigger road?
Yes.
Yes. Any other comments, members of council, questions, Mrs. Wright? Yes, Counselor Wright?
Comments? Now, this is the third council that this matter has been in front of. And I am still disappointed that the previous council decided to close the road. I think it aired. And I don't think it was in the public interest to close this road. I think they very well, the development could go ahead with the road open, as Mrs. Wright pointed out previously. Public Beach, one of the most famous golf courses in the world, has a public road going right through the middle. They don't need the road closed. They, we don't need to inconvenience residents. You know, what I'd like to do is not proceed, let's reopen the road, and they can find a better way to do their golf course.
Any comments, members of council? Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Wright. Mr. Burke, could we have another person that'd like to speak in a moment, please? Mr. Burke?
Oh, yeah. Would you like to come forward, sir? Mr. Dazbou, I live on Grassy Brook, and also I'm Dolores's neighbor. She quickly mentioned an address, I guess, I just don't know much I can do about this golf course, because it's going to happen. It's, I got, I feel everything's made up already, for the minds. But the address, we got people stopping to tell my face. Grand Niagara, Grand Niagara says, it's not on Grassy Brook Road. They're going to close it, it doesn't exist. They're going to put a cul-de-sac at the end of the street, right in front of their son's house. People are going to come downtown and go back, come downtown and go back, because they got on papers, on their emails, or wherever you see their addresses, Grassy Brook Road. It's not Grassy Brook Road. They got to come in off bigger way, because it, all you're going to confuse anyway, it's just going to be a big turnaround. And that's just sad. We got side streets, I think it's Morris Road, there's a bridge down on Morris Road. I don't know if I'd want to pass anybody on that bridge, because it's not very white. It's not very, it's just a little cement culvert, and any big trucks would come down and try to pass each other. Sorry, I'm not calling you out a ditch. It's, it's a brutal road. The roads are brutal out there. Winter's going to kill us, especially those sidewalks. We've only got one, one way open. That's Morris Road, and it sucks. Sorry, that's the best way I can explain the shape of that road. They put all those stones, car under, you get down to the bridge, and one car can go through that bridge, but not two cars.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Should I go there?
I was there the other day, sir, thank you. Okay. Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. This has been a long process. And this week, I have addressed the concern with our solicitor and our clerk. And what you have said, Mr. Beaman, is exactly where it is. We have already closed the road. We already have addressed the concerns, and it is time to move forward. So when it's time, I will move the bylaw.
Actually, at this point, it's the recommendation that came from in camera, and that's that council approve the agreement of purchase and sale from Grand Niagara Resorts Incorporated for part of Grassy Brook and Crowland Roads for $136,700, as outlined in L2000, can report L2007-42, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute, execute the agreement for purchase.
The motion, then, would you like to hear the motion, the recommendation? Okay. Moved by Counselor Fisher? Seconded by Counselor Thompson. Okay, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. And, Mr. Burke? Okay, we'll go back to the consent. Okay, we'll go back to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any member of council wishes to have looked at out of the consent agenda? Counselor Deodati?
Your Worship, the first one, 2007-34-34.
Okay. Do you want to deal with that question?
Yeah, if I could.
Certainly.
I just wanted to ask a question of staff, just getting ready here. I see that it's suggested that this be posted on the website, this bit of information. I don't know if anyone had a chance to really look closely at it, but I'm just wondering how we could tweak it to make it actually useful. Because the information way it's presented, I think, and unless I could be educated on this, it seems not to serve any purpose at all to the average reader. And I just wonder what we can do to make this, because the website is for public consumption, but MPMP, the idea I believe is to compare the municipalities with similar sizes, and maybe an explanation. And this year, it doesn't seem to do that.
Counselor Deodati, I'm going to have Mr. Burton answer the question, but I don't think we have a choice. Is that correct, Mr. Burton? Do you want to explain, please?
Your Worship, that is correct. This particular report is a provincial requirement. There is a set way of how to present the actual measures. There's some liberties in how we can dress it up, and we had a great discussion, our staff meeting in how we develop this report. However, by and large, this is a provincial requirement, this report.
And I appreciate that. So perhaps we could put subsequent information along with this report, maybe add to or narrow this report with some useful information, because arguably, this seems absolutely useless to the public, and I know it's provincially mandated in its present form. I'm just wondering, is there a way that, I mean, and we can rely by law and look at this, because it doesn't seem to shed light on anything. So anybody, myself on council, doesn't shed light on anything. And I'm sure, um, staff probably have the same feeling.
Perhaps council, or maybe the question may be, if we compare it year to year, that may be a purpose or for municipality, municipality, but there may be different performance measuring, I'm not sure if they're consistent, but that, is that part of the question?
No, I understand, because this has to be done by Bramford, too, I'm assuming. So since they've got, make their information public, maybe we can have a couple of comparisons, or maybe draw attention to a few of the comparators in the performance measures.
Mr. Burton?
I'm going to get some feedback about this, uh, with the report here.
Mr. Burton?
Yes, Your Worship, we also discussed that at staff, and we also, also realize that as different as Bramford, or Brampton, or whatever is from Niagara Falls a difference, so too would the, the measures in the fact of what's actually included in the measurement cost or the measurement revenue, the level of service, the degree of infrastructure repair, capital investment. There's a number of differences that would only be explained to great length of trying to reveal those differences. The finding comparative information between municipalities is best served when both municipalities actually agree to measure themselves alongside each other using the same kind of criteria. We have yet to find a municipality able to do that, not that we've been looking. However, the interesting thing is, we would like to compare to last year and the year previous to that. And in fact, over the years, we've said, yes, we would like to show the year-over-year change in these kind of statistics. We've even found those comparisons to be difficult because of the change year-to-year in our own city services, how we quantify the level of service, the shifting amount of cost and revenues that are related to those services. We find that these measures, as they're stated from the province, are very eloquent to help us provide meaningful information in municipal performance. That's why Mr. Harrison has intended a paragraph on page two. And in there, he talks about the measures and methods used to determine the data in his action were developed by the province. City staff, through strategic reviews to sit up this business initiative, review opportunities to develop measures that would be useful in the determination of evaluating city performance to council's strategic objectives. It's all about what we're doing here, not what the province wants. And what we're trying to do, even through our 2008 budget, is to, and through our service delivery reviews, is to identify those unique measures that we can quantify, that we can qualify year-over-year, and makes meaningful performance results for you as a council.
Counselor?
Yeah, nobody at all knows at all what you just said. Because we kind of knew a little bit, but, but I appreciate that response. I think, Your Worship, you have to see, I want to speak. Mr. McDonald?
If I could make a couple suggestions, one is Ken Diddley, too, and I've heard it before, so I, I know a little bit what he's talking about. But we're hoping that when we do the O.R.A. presentation, that we will identify certain operation standards that you will be able to relate to. And whether we can pull in other communities, we will pull in best practices and give you a better idea into how we're doing well with the best practices. But this particular report is extremely frustrating for all of us, and we spent a very good time with this, and our conclusion was exactly what you said, it's kind of useless. It's a requirement for... It's a requirement for us to present it. And it might just suggest that maybe a way to handle this is a motion from the council for staff to write to the province and write to the province and say, for years now, you've been asking us to produce this for a good reason. We'd like to know what that reason was and we'd like to know, in fact, since you're collecting from all communities, provide us some document to show us how we're doing relative to other communities. Like throw the question back to the province. The only reason this is here because we have to put it here and they collect the data. What are they doing with the data that in some light can help communities operate more efficiently? I'd just be curious about that because we can't answer it, you know, and it's frustrating for staff to try to provide that data and maybe they can shed some light on this for us.
Your worship, I would make that motion. Okay. Moved by Counselor Deedaw, seconded by Counselor Peter Enzo. Present him, your worship. Okay, we do that. Okay, any comments from members of council? Counselor Thompson?
For the lead of that, I wonder if we could at least give multiple mirrors last year compared to this year and also I'm sure that you can grab two or three municipalities just to give it some kind of meaning, even though if it's distorted, we can say to you, how come this is distorted? And you can say, well, they do their snow power in a different way or the region is involved and there's some explanation, but this is, I agree with the motion to do something, but at least if we don't get a response from the province, let's put some comparisons in of other municipalities that you can relate to and also previous years.
Mr. McDonnell?
We can pick a couple and do that and I guarantee you what we'll end up saying, we'll end up explaining why they, we can't compare it, that's what will happen. And even take our own, I take our own fire service for instance, because we have a unit number that we've had for the last several years on our website and I haven't looked at them because I'm sure that they're different because we've been changing the level of service. And if we change the level of service year to year, it's going to change, you know, the cost. So in almost all cases, you know, if we want to have an easy number where you can look at it and we can figure out why operationally we're doing something better or worse or whatever, and it's just a frustrating process. But let me, let us see if we can take a look at that and see if we can pick up a couple or we can at least compare some of the more important ones, like relative to particularly around public works and infrastructure areas. So we will address that during the budget process.
Okay, we have a motion in the form of the council. We'll deal with that if we can. Others in favor of the motion? Any opposed? The motion's carried. Are there any other comments regarding this issue? Members of council, Counselor Thompson?
On the condominium conversion, and we had one here tonight and we saw people who had no idea what was going to happen in a random situation. And I appreciate Mr. Beaman putting this just as an update because this was a question that I asked some time ago from a condominium on Valley Way that was converted. And although there has been some progress as a result of Mr. Beaman making some phone calls to see what the proponents were doing, it's been a year and a half. They've had one meeting and the residents who had bought the units were not happy with the previous owners and rejected some of those suggestions and it's still ongoing, but at least it's moving along. I wonder if as a result of, because I'm concerned about what's going to happen with these people too. They've been over there on for several years. There is protection as far as the actual lessees that are there now, but if somebody buys a unit, four or five of them, they could be paying condominium fees and not getting any benefits with it whatsoever until they form the board. And the one who owns the most units is in charge and has the most votes. So this is a real serious situation in my opinion. I think I'd like to have a resolution go to the provincial government, asking them to address condominium conversions and how, and put some time limits on the turnover of the units to the board of directors because it drags on and on and there's all kinds of, I believe, money being made by the people who have sold the units through condominium fees without them doing any work. And it's a serious problem and I can see it not happening in this situation, but there's always the potential. So I'd like to have a resolution brought forward to see if we can assist with these situations.
Is there a second to that motion? Counselor Fisher? Mr. Dabsburg, I know we've had an updated condominium requirement, condominium approval, condominium blue book approval in respect of a procedure with the province in terms of requirements for condominiums legislation. That happened a few years ago. Is that correct? An update on the requirements of condominiums and conversions?
The Act actually...
The Act has been updated?
Updated, yes.
Yes. Did they address that in the Act right now?
Obviously not.
Okay. So perhaps members of council, we can get, give some input for the next update when they do that, but we have a motion before us, so follow the vote. Others in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Now, do you wish to deal with the balance of the consent agenda? Is there any other question? Moved by Counselor Kerry, or seconded by Counselor Maves. Any further discussion? Have you seen none? Others in favor? Motion's carried. If we move on to bylaws, can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws? The bylaws are given a first reading by Counselor Peter Enzo. Sure. Sorry, Mr. Burton. I'm sorry, there's additional. Sorry, one more, please. Mr. Burke, there's additional items?
Yeah, there's actually, much to the clerk's consternation, there's actually six additional bylaws that have been listed in your handouts. So our numbers tonight run from 2007-186 to 2007-198.
Okay, with that provision, we do have a motion by Counselor Peter Enzo, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Again, council, through the motion, any questions or comments? Counselor Thompson?
Counselor Kerry and I have got conflict with the...
The note was noted earlier. Okay. Pardon? Your conflicts noted? Yes, Counselor Wing?
And I'm opposed to the one that they have the conflict on.
Okay. Do you mean of the council? Others in favor? Okay, your position has been noted by Counselor Wing. Thank you.
Bylaws 2007-186 to 2007-198, we had a first term.
A motion to give the bylaws a second for reading, Counselor Peter Enzo, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Again, council, through the motion, any further questions or comments? Others in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws 2007-186 to 2007-198, we had a second and third term in pass.
Thank you very much. So any business to see members of council? Counselor Peter Enzo, Counselor Maves, and Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, your worship. I did get a chance to talk with some of council before this meeting and advised them all that there was an article actually in the summer start. The city abandoned, your worship, last week, and what's known as a municipal card and they called it MUNICard. And what the credit card does, your worship, is that it allows residents to accumulate points on their purchases and then they can apply those points to their actual tax bill. It applies to all sectors, so residents can use it, business owners that are in commercial properties as well as industrial. Some of the facts about it, your worship, is that the MUNICard, as they're calling it now, has absolutely no annual fee. So people have a rewards credit card, oftentimes they pay up to $120 a year to keep that card. It's actually issued by a bank and the benefit, your worship, comes by way of the users re, I guess, cashing in their points for actual cash that goes against their property tax bill. So, your worship, in essence, the benefit is entirely tangible. The rewards are contributed to cash. It's handy in the sense that users don't actually put a certain plateau in order to cash their points in. At the end of every year, all they do is they take however many points they have and a dollar amount is assessed to it and then the bank actually pays the city what the amount would be in property taxes. Your worship, I find it to be incredibly smart idea, something that would have a direct benefit to our people. I can't think of how happy I would be actually to have a credit card in my pocket that had a picture of Niagara Falls on it that we called the Niagara Card that all the residents of the city of Niagara Falls have. So I'd like to actually hand the article over to our CAO, perhaps Mr. Burton, and have him follow up. There are contact names in here, your worship, and perhaps we can one day have our own municipal card.
That's a great idea. You're making a motion, Counselor Peter Enzo, seconded by Counselor Iainoni. Any further discussion on that? Others in favor? Motion's carried. Very progressive and...
You know, if you pass again.
Okay, I have Counselor Maves and Counselor Thompson.
Your worship, just to follow up on a few things, there's been emails from some people, Mr. John Mark, Mr. Mason, on this traffic coming and slowing down in the streets. And I look at the traffic coming things on Fortis Road and I'm not happy with those. Something better we can come up with aside from speed bumps or, because I'm stopped at the corner and looking and there's still whizzing by there and it looks like the union is going to slow things down on Woodbine, the policeman being there. Is there anything we can do? There must be something.
Mr. Burton?
Yes, your worship, we're asking, it would be a difficult situation to do with traffic coming. I know, the number person said it's a traffic hindrance. That's what it's there for. It's to slow people down. I know there's been some monitoring on Woodbine and there has been slowing in traffic there that has happened in post-monitoring that they're showing there. I think they're showing that 85% of the people are within the speed limit out there. So there has been some changes. And policing, you may say, yeah, when you're there. When you're not there, people will speed. I know, we're trying to do some follow-up in some of the different areas in Ford Road and Beaver Band Road, how it's working, if they feel it's going to go up, but we're also doing some follow-up monitoring. And I know they were doing the monitoring and all these stops and that was leading to problems where the traffic monitoring afterwards and the average speed actually went up because people were speeding up to make up for the lost time after stopping at all the stop signs. So it's really driven by the neighborhood. I mean, the city staff aren't out there looking for it. We really rely on the neighborhood if they want to have traffic coming put in. It's a very public process. We're dealing with the public as to what they would like to see out there and then end up installing those measures to help reduce the speed that's happening out there. But even with those measures in place, you continue to have that small element that will continue to speed. We see here, city hall, the traffic, the speed bumps we have in there and some of them really like to go really hard at it and they bottom out and they think it's great and they'll continue to do it.
Okay, Counselor Maves, I need your question. Counselor Thompson?
Just further to that, I hope they're going to have an evaluation of the traffic coming measures that have been put in because a cost comparison, because the amount of money that was spent on Woodbine and on Fortis Road compared to the benefits, people are still speeding and the only solution that where people get some relief is when there's a police officer there. With the amount of money that we've spent, we could probably hire a couple of police officers to go out there and do some extra work. So I think there really has to be an examination if the traffic coming actually works and if there is a benefit according to the amount of dollars that we're spending. But I was going to talk about that another time, but I agree. I don't think people are happy. There's all kinds of complaints and a lot of money spent and low results. The first, I got two little minor items and I don't know how else to handle this. This was mail to me and it has a note on here about road problems in the Burdette area, which I, says here that one gentleman admitted to the fact that he had caught 15 rats in the summer period and it is as a result of open compost piles with raw food and everything being dumped in there and not being properly contained and creating a road problem. The gentleman, given this or whoever, did not sign the name, so I've been in touch with the health department. Do we still have three years, your worship, to, do we still have an exterminator on contract?
Actually, I should just tell you, we did have, with the health units on top of this, we've had several discussions. Medical officer of health, who's asked her when the health unit will take over in respect of what's becoming an issue. We have inspectors on site, there was an education program going on. Counselor Iainoni's heard about this problem for the last two years. I've dealt with the human officer last several months, but the health unit is on top of it. They did say that there was some concern. We haven't had people being able to produce the evidence that I think the inspectors want in maybe keeping the carcass or whatever, but we've heard those same comments, Counselor Thompson, and the health unit has been advised. I understand we have no exterminator on contract and Mr. Bulbik, would you like to elaborate on that?
Your worship, I mean, we have a time system, you know, we do have a problem with rats, we won't get, you know, on a has needed basis and typically we'll be, we'll just sue the system.
Well, Peter thought initially it was because of the plant closing, as you know. They've been under that source and that isn't the case. So I know the health unit has been on top of it and they're pursuing it, so, you know, the process.
In fact, I had extensive discussions with the inspectors. They told me they've been out there, there's still a bit of a problem, they're still working on it, but I've responded to the people because I don't know who they are. Anyway, let me elaborate a little. For the last nine months, we've been here at council, I get things brought to my attention and I bring them up at council, whether it's petition, Marlesland petition regarding the intersection at the neighborhood of St. David's and the traffic and the difficulties there. There were other things about the transit commission we brought up initially, right at the first of this term. I think there's probably been 15 different reports that I've requested and I haven't had one thing come back yet over that nine-month period. And I'm trying to be very positive about this. I don't know why that has happened and I understand the clerk is working and identified this as a bit of a problem, that they're not getting a response back. And I spent three years with the health department and the authorities dealt with complaints. And I'm suggesting that, so that we are not embarrassed as counselors because I get people calling me up and say, oh, I brought this to your attention and I saw you bring it up at council. It's been three months, what has happened? And of course, I have stickers all over my desk and I try to coordinate and keep track of these complaints and the reports that are not coming back from the appropriate staff. I would like, in talking with the health department, if you go to their contact, I thought this would all be done electronically now. It's still not. When a complaint comes in, the secretary at the health department writes the complaint or types it on a duplicate form. The form is, one is given to the inspector, another one is given to the person who remains the complaint. The secretary also keeps a copy and it is brought forward every three weeks and notations are made on that, what the progress of that complete problem or complaint or what has been done to rectify the problem. It's a very easy system. If we, as counselors, when we relay a complaint, if we're given a form, we can keep it in front of us at our desks at home and follow through so that we don't get into this situation where there are no responses coming back, which has been the case and it's been substantial in my particular case because I haven't yet, I think I've got one or two responses about, and all the things that I've brought up over the last nine months, it's just incredible. I lost track myself. So I would like to finish this on a positive note to determine a complaint plan system. And I know I talked to the clerk, he was looking at, in fact, the mechanism to do it electronically. I think that when you're dealing with laypeople, electronics really doesn't work today and if you have a paper trail, we can get a copy of the complaint. It can be updated every three weeks or every two months if it takes that long so that we can all be informed and we can do a proper job for the people, the taxpayers who are calling us and relaying these concerns and problems to us. I think it can be done very easily and I think it can be extremely helpful and we can keep track of what's going on and what information we're waiting to bring forward. The one a couple of weeks ago about the questions, I would love to have those as soon as they are prepared to the NPs to see what we're asking them. I understand that Mr. RFP says he's going to learn the job on preparing, but I haven't seen him. I'd like to see him. So anyway, I'd like to make a motion that we investigate this and it doesn't have to be exactly the way I said it, but to work on some mechanism where we don't lose track of issues that are brought up, complaints that are phoned in and so that we know exactly where they stand and when the public calls, we can respond appropriately or else get back to the staff person to keep them informed.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, do you want to address that, please?
Yes, your worship, I agree with everything Counselor Thompson has stated. We are working on an internal system...
We are working on an internal system, and in fact, with regard to residents' complaints, it's actually been somewhat successful. There is a system called the Service Request System, which residents will send emails through our website, and the whole point of the system is exactly that, they'll get a notification when the matter's been dealt with. It's been used to varying degrees of success, but I think when it has been used properly by staff, it has been successful. So there's that aspect, the regular complaints that come through the municipality. The second part of that is what you're referring to as the council resolutions, are the motions that have been passed since the beginning of the year. And we have been working for the last few weeks, especially diligently, to go through those, to see what maybe has fallen through the cracks, to maybe light a fire under certain staff people as to why those reports aren't forthcoming. And we're hoping to have that whole document, if you will, finalized in the next few weeks.
Counselor Thompson, let's satisfy your party. Okay. Any other business? German, motion to adjourn, Counselor Carey, it comes from Maves, others in favor?